in the San Fernando Valley so that we can have a better understanding and so that our planning folks will have a better opportunity. Obviously, some of our horse owners are not licensing their horses and they're not registering their horses, so our planning department doesn't recognize their existence and sometimes we push out equestrian uses when in fact they're contributing greatly to our community. So this is a good opportunity for us to keep a focus on all of these issues and I commend Wendy for her leadership on this issue and commit to continuing to work with her so we can resolve the problems in our areas up in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Thank you.
With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sax, the nays did not have it. That passes.
On the February 20th meeting, your Los Angeles City Council considered a communication from the Transportation Committee regarding a list of transportation projects submitted to the MTA for a long-range transportation plan. Councilmember Wendy Gruel talks about the importance of this project list.
We had heard this item in our committee about a month ago and I'd asked the department to meet with each council office because all too often what happens is the list of projects and priorities because we don't have a lot of call for projects or things that have happened. These are lists that had been accumulated before and I said, "We want to make sure that what we have is up to date." And I think the department will tell you that they met with, offered to every council office the opportunity to review the list that was going forward and to get comments. And I think that dialogue produced a list of projects that will be competitive in the future. And the reason that this is so important, colleagues, is because when MTA is considering funding some very important transportation projects, they have to be on this list, they have to be part of what they're planning. It's very difficult to get something funded that has not been part of the plan. And this fits into our larger discussion of a strategic plan for the city of Los Angeles so that we know when we're going forward, not only to the MTA and to SCAG, but to our state and federal representatives, trying to ask for money and to make sure that they're fulfilling on their commitments and to get fair share for our city, we need to have those kinds of lists. And so this is a very broad and dynamic list covering various modes of transportations and locations.
The acronym SCAG you hear refers to the Southern California Association of Governments, and of course, MTA is the Metropolitan Transportation Authority. Saying he wants to come to work on a rapid bus traveling on Venice Boulevard, Councilmember Bill Rosendahl talks about the Green Line extension in his District 11 as well as the Venice Boulevard route.
...the other day, I can't think of a bigger issue that we all are united about, and that's the gridlock in the Southland. It's the worst ever and it's only going to get worse until real leadership takes it and runs forward with it. And you've been a great leader on it, Wendy, and I appreciate that. Couple of three quick questions for you. First is, I'm seeing on one of my papers here that we do have the Green Line back in the mix, that it would go into the airport and go up Lincoln Boulevard. Is it now on all the plans and all the maps going forward?
Yes, Councilman. Corrections were made. There was some confusion about a graphic that was presented by a SCAG representative in council during that day, but in terms of the actual planning documents, the Green Line extension through LAX and ultimately up Lincoln Boulevard is included in the SCAG RTP Strategic Plan, meaning open-ended, the open-ended plan, as well as in the MTA Long-Range Transportation Plan.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. The aviation would be the first stop on Century Boulevard. That could be a multimodal stop, so everybody else's dreams can have their light rail or their subways go to that spot, right?
That is the potential, correct.
And then we can go to Parking Lot C for one more stop and then go into the airport and tie it into the people mover as we go through our green light projects at LAX.
As you are, a number of alternatives are being studied, which includes that particular one.
And as well as looking up Lincoln Boulevard into Santa Monica, if we get that Expo line into Santa Monica, we have a terrific north-south connection.
Correct. Long-term.
And then, well, it's got to be shorter than long. I want to be alive, you know? I'm tired of this stuff going on forever. I also want to make sure the Green Line goes down to the Galleria in Redondo Beach, which would take the whole South Bay and give them that north-south. Are we looking at that leg as well for the long-term plans?
As you're aware, the entire alignment of that is outside the city of Los Angeles, but I'm aware the South Bay COG Council of Governments has been actively lobbying for that, and it's my belief that is also included in the strategic long-range transportation plan.
Yeah, both SCAG and MTA got to get with us in that long-range plan, but I appreciate what you just said on that. The second thing is, I've been waiting for a rapid bus on Venice Boulevard, one of the most busiest streets in the city, and we have no rapid buses there at all. I want to come to work on that. How are we doing on the rapid bus idea for Venice Boulevard?
Once again, since MTA is the transit operator, which who would actually be operating the services, our relationship with MTA for rapid bus comes to the hardware in the street and the software that enable the rapid buses to actually improve their travel times. We have remained in discussions with MTA to include Venice Boulevard as one of the eight additional rapid bus routes beyond the 20 that have been previously programmed and implemented. And that's also, there is a rapid bus expansion program included in the long-range transportation plan.
Yeah, let them know that at the turn of the century, we used to use Venice a little bit more a hundred years ago. It's a great Boulevard. I prefer to see more activity on that than my little Pico piece being assaulted to the 405 right now. And I also want to see a bus-only lane on Wilshire Boulevard, which has been a lot of discussion about, and we'd like an update on that as well.
Right, which is also programmed in the long-range transportation plan.
Right, right. And thank you for your presentation.
Directing his statements to staff, District 1 Councilmember Ed Reyes says he'd like to see dash-type systems within neighborhoods as well as bikeways to help reduce traffic in Los Angeles.
In terms of long-range plans, as I stated during the SCAG report, and our need to look at local circulators and local markets, this city has a culture in which we've been pushing our traffic out into the suburbs and back in as quick as possible because of the federal mandates and everything else that goes with the grading of intersections. What I think we failed is looked at the local markets. Each neighborhood has their own version of their main street that they want to preserve. We have development of gold-lined stations with inadequate parking, especially the one they built going through the northeast. It seems to me that we should be facilitating dash-type systems, local circulators that can help ease the lack of parking that's inherent throughout the city. With these local circulators, if they were electric buses, low noise, no pollution, it'd be a great way to get people to think about using the existing rail lines and bus systems to get from their home to these facilities. So that's an issue that I want to bring up as a transit-oriented district plans evolve to stimulate investment towards these types of local circulators. That's one. The other is bikeways, looking at bikes as alternative mode of transportation. Take it seriously in terms of how we are going to improve our roadways to make them safer so that the bikes in and of themselves can become an option. Europe is already doing this. Couple of cities are doing it in the country where you actually can use your credit card. You can have a bike-to-bike facility. We can literally take, rent a bike for half a day, the day, or there's a whole program that's already evolved. The National League of Cities has highlighted that whole program, the alternative means of transportation. That's something we should take more seriously, again, to induce ridership in our bus lines that we made it convenient to get there, and that we haven't done.
Asking for statistics on public transportation in LA, District 4 Councilmember Tom Labonge expresses his concerns about the Los Angeles freeway system and talks about freeway pinch points in certain areas.
...plan, how many percentage of people take public transit, you know, right now?
But there are several ways of calculating that.
But just give me a guess, because I don't want to talk too long, because I know they got other business.
On any given day in Los Angeles, of course, there are probably a million boardings of public transit in different forms, between bus, rail, and...
Right. And they count at a boarding twice, so it's not like there's a million people, it's really 500,000. Anyway, like 85% of people still use vehicles, right?
On any given day for the journey to work, correct.
Whatever it is.
Personal vehicles.
Who's going to focus on the existing freeway system? Are we going to abandon that or are we going to deal with it?
No, it's not abandoned at all. In fact, one of the comments that we make to MTA is the city's demand that the city have a greater role to play in influencing the investment decisions by Caltrans. Right now, in the call for projects, for freeway projects, MTA works almost exclusively with Caltrans in determining which projects get funding through the call. And one of our demands is that the city, as a major beneficiary of improvements, but also one of the entities that suffers the most in terms of failure of the freeways to function fully, that we should be seated at the table when those decisions are being taken.
Very good. And I've asked the CLA for some kind of advisory group for freeway systems in the county to be a voice for that, because still a number of people move. This little map, I don't know if you can see, Michael, and you're very knowledgeable with the city, these are just simple pinch points with existing right-of-ways. Northbound 5 sometimes backs up all the way to Las Feliz Boulevard, four and a half miles because of the Alameda on-ramp in Burbank. If the on-ramp was changed to be a transitional on-ramp instead of a drop-on ramp, possibly it would ease the congestion. Same thing south on the Harbor Freeway as you go to the port, it goes from four lanes down to three. Also down the Hollywood Freeway, all the way through to the 4 level, there's certain pinch points that could be, you know, corrected. And also the San Diego Freeway. I went out to Mr. Rosendahl's district there on Saturday. Congratulations on that great fire station you fought for, for the people out there on the West Jefferson Boulevard, Mr. Rosendahl. I saw the work that's being done on the San Diego Freeway, but they're like going to be finished in years. We should be asking Caltrans to try to expedite that just to ease the pain of congestion. And anyway, I just want to make sure we do focus on our freeway system still. We do focus on our streets, secondaries, and majors. We do focus on Pauline Chan's concept of neighborhood protection. She's over at DOD. And also, we do focus on things that Mr. Reyes spoke of, the bikeway system, which is so important. Bicycle boulevards, using our existing right-of-ways, whether they're transmission, whether they're river right-of-ways for bikeways. One of the big fight I have coming up is I want the bikeway on the LA River through the county property out by Universal. But if you go out there, you see they built on the right-of-way, and so we have that problem. So this is just a point. And members, I just want, one of my challenges for, or things I'm going to do in 2008 is talk about pinch points on the freeway system, and I'll be visiting with you all. I know I got Mrs. Hahn's pinch point, and right there at the 110 and the 405. And I know Mr. Alocón spoke yesterday about a pinch point up at the 5. Mr. Smith, we'll continue with that. Thank you so much.
And as amended, if we can, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
You can listen to city council meetings as well as committee and commission meetings on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 AM. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 AM. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 AM and 6:30 PM, on Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 AM. Well, that concludes our program for the weekend ending February 22nd, 2008. On behalf of Michael Flynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Plobjoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Thank you. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is Tuesday, February 26, 2008. Thank you, Councilmembers LeBonge, Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, Smith, and Zine. We would ask Councilmembers Alacon, Cardenas, Han, Weiss, and Wesson to please make their way down to the Council Chamber so we can begin our meeting. Thank you.
Well, not the budget, I guess.
I'd like to ask Councilmembers Alacon, Cardenas, Han, and Weiss to make their way down to the Council Chambers. It is now almost 10:15. We will have five more minutes, and then we will entertain any motions for adjournments. And it is 10:15. If we could ask Councilmembers Alacon, Cardenas, Han, and Weiss to make their way down to the Council Chambers. We have three excused members, Councilmember Garcetti, Councilmember Weisar, and Councilmember Reyes. Ask them to make their way down to the Council Chambers. If we do not have a quorum in the next five minutes, I will entertain the motions for adjournments. Thank you very much. Again, this is Tuesday, February 26, 2008. It is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We meet Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10 o'clock, and the first Friday of the month, we are at Van Nuys City Hall. We encourage you to participate, either by attending or watching us on Channel 35, as well as going online to www.lacity.org. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weisa, LeBonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum. Madam President?
Thank you. First item of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Yes. Mr. Smith moves. Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute for today.
Yes. If I could ask Ms. Perry to lead us in the flag salute today, and ask everyone to please rise.
Please rise and place your right heart, right hand over your heart, your right heart, and follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Next items.
On the regular agenda, item one is a street vacation item in Council District Five. Notice for public hearing, council should instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Unless there's any special on that item, we will take that and instruct. Do we need to vote on that? Yes. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Items two through seven are items which public hearings have been held.
Thank you. I know Mr. Parks would like to call item four special. Colleagues, any other specials? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That item's been, those items have been approved. Yes, Mr. Parks?
Six forthwith.
Six will go forthwith. Thank you. Next items?
Items eight through 21 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Thank you. I'd like to call item number 13 special. Other specials, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Parks?
15.
Any other specials, colleagues? If not?
And Madam President, there is cards on number 14.
On number 14, thank you. Colleagues, any other specials?
And Madam President, council should have 12 members today. Do you wish to hold the ordinances on the desk?
Yes, we will hold those ordinances. I think we're just waiting for Mr. Alacon. Thank you. So, the remaining items that we have before us, items 16 through 21, looks like. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
On the supplemental agenda items, 22 and 23 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Thank you. Any specials, colleagues, on items 22 and 23? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
That would take council back to public comment, or the items called special?
Thank you. We'll go to public comment, and staff and others, we do have a little bit of noise. If you could, if you take your conversations, please, outside. We will first go out to the San Fernando Valley for Donna Pearman.
Thank you. I would like to make an adjournment, since I'm not on later. When you adjourn, please adjourn for Marcella Firestone, mother of Miriam Fogler, who's with her family in Shiva, morning. She was a beautiful woman, a female cantor, maybe rabbi, along with her husband, who is a cantor and rabbi. She had a beautiful voice, survived her husband and four children, one grandchild. Anyway, I didn't get to talk about public transit, so let's talk about that now. We need to stop the buses from striking, ever, because they strike people can't go to work or go to school. And these bus-only lanes and road quality, oversized vehicles, you're speaking in riddles. People will not take public transit unless it's convenient. It's wrong to have people stand a long time waiting for buses, especially the line 720 running down Wilshire, especially in the afternoon. I see loads of kids at Wilshire and Barrington trying to get on the bus. They only let about one quarter of them, and that they had to fill up other buses. Recently, that bus had to pass disabled veterans waiting at the hospital. One man had to try to run and yell, "Stop!" The bus didn't. Now you want to break up Wilshire and have Subway to the Sea. Transportation is about finding where the people are most traveling most. I see the buses have been cut. Buses need to stop at the correct stop. The 233 bus stopped at 761 Park. I got on, got confused, and got lost in the rain. How can you tell people to get out of the cars with public transportation as bad as it is? You want to take public, you want to take transportation money and put it into the light rail and subway? I see they're taking away from our local buses, and I want to say it's impossible for some people to take, to disabled people, they can't stand waiting, almost no bunches for the rabbit, which means the bus has rabies. It's not fast. You won't use transportation money to really help public transit. Why don't we have special buses pick up school kids like Wilshire and Barrington? They're noisy or bellish and take places for the disabled, tired, or worked adults. The politicians know to divert the money, use it the wrong way, and then ask for more money. What happened to money? What are you taxing people for? And I just wanted to thank Cardenas for having the agendas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Hunt?
Good evening, or good morning. You guys should be listening to the, to the people. I think that they're the taxpayers. But anyways, I'm going to tell you a little story about Devis and Butthead that you guys are going to be seeing tomorrow from the city attorney's office. Devis in Butthead is part of the city attorney's office who lies to its city council. And he makes up stories about the First Amendment issues and things like that. Please pay attention to these guys, because they could be bringing forth another lawsuit to the city council if you guys don't pay attention. They thought that they would put me in court on the morning of the 27th, the same day that the ordinance is being repealed. I pushed my court date back, so I'll be here, so I can tell you guys the truth about what's going on and how it's happening. When you begin to tell the truth, you begin, you begin to get truthful answers. The 11th district, you should really be paying attention to what your constituents are saying, and to the town hall meeting, really going back to time, place, and manner with this ordinance, to save you a lot of trouble and a lot of money and out of, out of the court issues. I think that's what they were saying at the town hall meeting. So if you really listen to what your people are saying, is really just go back to time, place, and manner. I don't want to eye and I don't want to pee, because it's going to cause segregation. And I've been working in numerous hours at my computer to, to file a lawsuit on the peas and the ayes, because they're not interspersed yet. And there is, there is not any actions where I see that they got back with my attorney where they're interspersed. So I'll see you guys tomorrow, and it's going to be a great day, and hopefully I'll get back to work.
Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item four called special by Councilmember Parks.
Yes, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, this budget item today is maybe the toughest one we've had over the last several years. And there are a number of items that have been prepared for us by the CAO, a number of items have been prepared by the CLA, and also from staffs to give us some idea of where we are on this year's budget. I'd like to ask the CAO and the CLA to come up to the table, to give us a brief overview of where we are on the budget. And Madam Chair, what I'd like to recommend is that as we go through the budget today, that we replicate the system that we use through the regular budget and use the CAO's report as a guide, and go through it page by page, so that although it's recommending we adopt the CAO report and the supplemental, I think there are many issues in the CLA report that we can deal with on a page-by-page review, and that's what I'd recommend we do. We're going to ask Ms. Sisson to start off. Could you hold my time?
Good morning. We do have a brief PowerPoint that we did give to the Budget and Finance Committee, and we've actually added some information on the coming fiscal year, so I'd like to go through that with you briefly today, and apologies to those members of Budget and Finance that have seen this presentation. Again, we are here to talk about our mid-year financial status report, and it is probably one of the most difficult reports the city has had to deal with in some time. I also want to note that David Luther, who's the chief of our Budget Section, and Maria Gutierrez, who's our FSR analyst, are at the table with me. As I said, this report was discussed extensively in Budget and Finance, but the sharp downturn in cities' revenues make it prudent to repeat some of that information here. It's also important to note that even though we are thrilled, all of us, with the passage of Prop S, we still face a very severe fiscal situation, and we're lucky that with the passage of Prop S, the situation is not going to be worse. It's also important for you to know that Los Angeles is not the only city in California facing these challenges. Cities of Sacramento, Long Beach, San Jose, San Francisco, Riverside, and many others are also addressing both current year revenue declines and projected deficits in 2009. In short, all of the signs point to this year being a beginning of a very challenging fiscal environment, and it suggests that it may be time for the mayor and council to consider a thoughtful and thorough discussion of how the city delivers its services, as well as which services the city should continue to deliver. As noted, both in our report and that of the CLA, until we solve the structural imbalance between the growth rate of city revenues and the growth rate of city expenditures, we will continue to find ourselves in these uncomfortable circumstances. In order to understand why revenue and expenditure trends are so significant, and also to respond to some requests from council members, we want to start with a few budget basics, basically some reminders here. If you look at the PowerPoint presentation in front of you, it's important to remember that more than half of the city's total revenue comes from general fund sources that are considered unrestricted. That's about 56%. But the remaining 44% of total revenue comes from special fund revenues that must be spent for very specific purposes, or restricted general fund sources such as fee-based services and grant receipts. Probably even more important for what we're looking at now is the fact that over 87% of our revenue, I'm going to say that again, 87% of our general fund revenue goes up or down depending on economic conditions, and explains a lot about why we're here today. Only 13% comes from other sources, like transfers from the city savings account or reserve fund, or from the power revenue fund of LADWP. Those are the only things not linked to economic performance. We are somewhat blessed in that we do have a variety of revenue sources. However, those major ones are economically sensitive. We can move to the next slide. Property taxes is our largest revenue source. It is also one of those that is economically sensitive. We're lucky that with Prop 13, one of its advantages is that this revenue source has some stability in downward markets. That is, it's a lagging revenue source and tends to lag the economy somewhat. And for that reason, we are actually projecting to receive our projected property tax this year. You can see the other type, other top five revenue sources listed, utility users' tax, business tax, and sales taxes, and we'll talk about how those are performing in a bit. As I mentioned, special funds also contribute a major portion to the budget, but these must be spent on the uses for which they were voted. Sewer construction and maintenance funds, local transit assistance, and then, of course, we do have obligations to our bondholders, that is, our levy for bond redemption and interest, as well as funds for gas tax, and of course, our solid waste resources fee. In terms of how we spend our money, we spend our money, for the most part, on public safety. It's the largest single consumer of general fund resources. Currently, public safety accounts for about $2.5 billion of our general fund, and that includes fire, police, animal services, and emergency management. Now, the next slide sort of is a good picture of the problem, and that is, if you look at our budget over the last nine years, the average growth rate in revenues has been approximately 5%, but the average growth rate in expenditures has been 6%. And you can see that in that the blue line is still above the red line, and that is our problem today. Now, let's look at where we stood for the mid-year financial report. In the second financial status report, potential expenditure deficits of approximately $75 million were identified. However, at this point, the deficit has now increased to $85.8 million. The increase is due to fuel costs, which have risen $8 million. Outside council expense projections, that's what we're projecting to spend by the end of the fiscal year, have gone up $2.9 million, and we have larger deficits in general services, police, and transportation. Compounding the impact of the expenditure deficits is revenue shortfalls. We're now projecting a general fund revenue shortfall of almost $70 million, and combined with the expenditure deficits noted, this amounts to a $155 million budget problem. Revenue shortfalls are not unprecedented in the city, but they are atypical. The last time general fund revenue fell short of budget was 1996-97, as we were coming out of the long downturn that affected Southern California in the 90s. Most of the revenue problems that we are currently experiencing are directly related to the deterioration of the economy at the federal, state, and local levels. And as you can see in the slide, we are anticipating that we will fall short of budgeted revenues in three key areas. Sales tax, it appears that calendar year 2007 taxable sales will be unchanged from the 2006 level. The city's most economy-sensitive revenue, the sales tax, will likely fall $15 million below budget. What that means is that while we projected about a 4% growth in sales tax in the adopted budget, we expect no growth in sales tax this year. budget, we expect no growth in sales tax this year. Documentary transfer tax. The volume of real estate activity in the city has declined to the level of the mid-1990s and continues to fall. In fact, there were recent press reports over the last two days noting that California is one of the states experiencing the highest level of foreclosures. Although the documentary transfer tax was budgeted to decline by 16%, and again, we did forecast there'd be a decline, we put a 16% decline in revenue from this revenue source, it now appears the decline will be closer to 20%, which means that that revenue source will fall short by about $7 million. Licenses, permits, fees and fines, these are basically our departmental receipts and approximately 14% of general fund receipts come from this source. While receipts are close to target at mid-year, key reimbursement scheduled for the second half of the fiscal year will not be received or will be significantly less than budgeted. $15 million reimbursement from the state for mandated programs will not occur. And the sale of the city's fiber optic network, anticipated to generate $20 million, is now likely to generate only between $10 and $11 million this year. In addition, the airport has not committed to reimbursing the general fund for $6 million in additional police services as anticipated when the fiscal year 2008 budget was prepared and expected overtime reimbursements are $2.5 million below budget. Although receipts to date show no evidence that other economy-sensitive revenues are stalling, the transient occupancy tax, parking and business taxes often closely follow the sales tax. These accounts are close to plan, but like the sales tax, pardon me, they are very sensitive to the economy. With regard to business tax in particular, the Office of Finance estimates that business tax revenue will be lower than the budget estimate. However, we are closely watching receipts and we will wait to see the results of the business tax renewal period in March before recommending any additional adjustments. The message I'm trying to send here is that further downward adjustments to revenue are very possible. We can move to Slide 8. This is really just a summary page that I'll go over very quickly because I think most of you have had time to review our report, which basically gives you the summary of our recommendations for balancing the budget at this time. Our recommendations included approximately $117 million to partially offset the $155 million budget problem. If these actions are implemented, the potential year-end budget problem would be reduced to $37.6 million. It's important that you know that in preparing our recommendations, efforts were made to avoid significant impacts to public services and employee layoffs. Nevertheless, some of our recommendations do impact public services and some of the decisions that need to be made will be difficult. In terms of our recommendations, we recommended eliminating $15.5 million in funding for line items in the unappropriated balance to be transferred to the Reserve for Economic Uncertainties. That was $7.4 million to delay the opening of new police stations, funding for the LAPD Audit Division, reserve officer recruitment and leadership teams, and $1.8 million for new fire stations as well as funding for the fire complaint office. We also recommended eliminating $2.2 million for the workers' comp replacement system in personnel and approximately $1.8 million for gang prevention and gang prosecution efforts, monies that have not yet been programmed and are not ready to be spent. We're also recommending transfers of $17.2 million from departments to the Reserve for Economic Uncertainties. For example, reducing the general fund appropriation to the library by $2 million, $1 million reduction for planning, for case processing, reducing graffiti removal and community beautification projects, eliminating $1.1 million for paving of unimproved streets and alleys, deferring small equipment replacement at recreation and parks, and eliminating 16 new left-turn aero approaches and four new AT SAC signal installations. These recommended transfers will increase total funding in the Reserve for Economic Uncertainties from approximately $23 million to almost $56 million. We also identify potential surplus property sales, which I'm sure we'll discuss today, of about $10.7 million. We've recommended the sale of three former animal shelters located in the East Valley, San Pedro and West Los Angeles, and we are recommending the suspension temporarily of the 50/50 rule so that all receipts can be deposited in the general fund. We're also recommending, as did the CLA's report, the sale of surplus fire station properties, but those receipts be deposited into the general fund. Due to the revenue shortfalls, we're also recommending that $9.2 million in receipts from Figueroa Plaza previously recommended to be transferred to the Reserve Fund be deposited as general fund receipts to offset the revenue deficit. Now, there's some other issues that we also raised in our report. One is the deferral of state gas tax funds, which I believe will be discussed as part of the CLA's report. The actions which are contained in the committee report reduce this year's budget deficit to approximately $40 million. If you look at the next slide, you will see that if we do not take additional actions, we will deplete our contingency reserve to a mere $5.4 million by June 30th. That is, if we take no further actions after this financial status report, the $37 million deficit will have to be funded by the Reserve Fund, which would only leave us about $5 million in our contingency reserve. Still leaves us a healthy balance in our emergency reserve, but depletes the reserve To that end, we are already in the initial stages of preparation of a follow-up report and although we have made every effort to exclude reductions to police officer hiring, firefighter resources and affordable housing in this report, these options may still need to be considered if alternatives cannot be identified to close the remaining $37.6 million budget gap. It's also clear that the declines in revenue we are seeing this year will most likely continue through fiscal year 2009 and as a result, both the mayor and council will need to continue to closely monitor and contain expenditures. I'd like to conclude with some comments on the 2009 budget forecast and the reason that this year is different from prior budgets. And you'll note that this is a little unusual because we are currently in the midst of preparing the mayor's proposed budget, but the economic circumstances dictate that everyone be aware of the challenges we are facing. We go to the next slide. It's important to understand that we are projecting no growth in revenue for the next year. Expenditures, however, are still projected to grow approximately 5% over the current year. Between the fact that there will be no growth in revenue and a 5% increase in expenditures, we are estimating next year's budget deficit at almost $400 million. The next slide, I believe, I hope, yes, there it is, gives you a picture of the projected gap. You can see where we are today, we've sort of stayed even for the last two years, but our forecast for next year shows that gap widening between revenues and expenditures. Now, in prior years, these gaps have been filled by very strong revenue growth and unallocated or unanticipated revenue. And on the next slide, you can see a chart of where those monies have come from. Interestingly, over the last six years, we've had, of course, very steady and very almost unprecedented growth in the real estate market and what that has resulted in is much more revenue coming into the budget and also unanticipated revenue coming in at year-end, for example, higher than projected documentary transfer tax or property tax. Revenue increases of from $170 million to over $500 million have been available near the end of the budget planning cycle to offset projected deficits. What makes this year different is that it is highly unlikely those unallocated revenues or that revenue growth will be available this year. On the next page, we wanted to talk to you a little bit about what's going to be required ahead. The report leaves approximately $40 million in shortfalls that will need to be addressed and so it's important to begin now discussing controversial items that must be on the table. The first is revenue alternatives. Both my staff and staff in the mayor's office and I'm sure staff in the CLA's office are looking at potential revenue alternatives to provide resources for services. That includes taking all fees to full cost recovery. One of the fees that will need to be considered is the solid waste resources fee and at what level that should be set to pay for services. In addition, we will need to discuss new facilities because while the taxpayers have been very generous with bond money to build and construct the facilities, we cannot identify the resources to maintain and sustain them. Police hiring. Police hiring will have to be looked at as trade-offs with other city services, as will fire resources and the continuing $8 million transfer to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It's important to note that any savings generated today will help next year and that any delays will only make next year's deficit worse. In conclusion, it's the beginning of a very challenging fiscal period for the city and the dialogue that needs to begin now is one of priorities. We need to be ready to look at controversial items and items that may be difficult to make decisions about. It will take all of us, mayor, city council, city controller, city attorney and general managers to deal swiftly, effectively and prudently with the financial challenges that lay ahead. And I need to say this again, we just do not have the luxury of time. Delays only make the problem harder to solve and make next year's deficit larger. On the other hand, any actions taken swiftly and expeditiously this year can also help greatly with next year's budget gap. That concludes my comments and I'll pass over to the CLA.
Thank you very much, Karen. We have Jerry do your report.
Sure. We issued our report yesterday midday. Our report focused on some specific questions and issues that were raised by the Budget and Finance Committee following the hearing of the CAO report. Specifically, the committee expressed concern about the proposed reduction in graffiti abatement and community beautification grants. With regard to the library, Ms. Holmes indicated that she could absorb a $1.5 million cut essentially in various purchases as well as purchases of new books. She did indicate, of course, that that would certainly affect the constituents of the library because there wouldn't be any new books coming in. But the additional $500,000 cut, she indicated, could impact the ability to keep libraries open because part of that $500,000 may have to be taken out of as needed staffing. So in essence, she indicated she couldn't guarantee that there would be no impact on library hours. So the committee asked that alternatives be looked at for libraries as well. Finally, there was a reduction in left-turn signals of $600,000, which various committee members expressed concern about. And finally, a lot of concern was expressed relative to the sale of surplus property. So what we have done since last Tuesday is search for other potential spending cuts in order to try and restore some of these service reductions. Bottom line, as Karen indicated, there are no revenues really to be found to restore these cuts because we still face a $40 million gap this fiscal year. So we looked at other expenditure reductions. With the help of the CAO, we identified about $477,000 in neighborhood council funding. This is funding that was set aside for new neighborhood councils and it appears that that will not be needed this year. I need to stress that this does not impact funding for existing neighborhood councils. These are funding for new neighborhood councils only. Additionally, we're proposing a transfer of $600,000, which would be $40,000 per council district in the recent payments from the Street Furniture Fund. That represents a little more than 40% of the recent deposit into that fund. And finally, certainly as you all know, we recommended a reduction in the March Police Academy class of about, that would save about a million dollars. This is, as you know, based on the fact that P D is projected to over-hire this year, that they have been expected to exceed the hiring plan by about 45 officers. We understand from information this morning that in fact attrition has been higher than was expected so that the net increase overage in officers is down to 31. So in essence, that would change the million dollar number to roughly $300,000. And basically, I don't know how much detail Mr. Parks would like me to go through the report, but in essence, some of the issues that we looked at, again, we certainly recognize how important it is for police hiring and what a priority it is and has been for the council and the mayor. So we don't make this recommendation lightly. However, in looking at what we're facing in the '08-'09 fiscal year, it is our belief that if overspending is allowed and hiring more than budgeted positions continues, it will make the funding of the basic police hiring plan in the years to come all that much more difficult to achieve. So we are proposing bringing that back in line with what is funded for the current year. Some other short-term alternatives, I know we'll discuss more the selling of surplus property. Because that represents over $10 million of the budget hole, we are not recommending taking that out. However, some of the properties that have been identified, there is active effort to build affordable housing on some of those and a safe center on another. I need to stress that the sale of surplus property to balance the budget is very problematic. I mean, there are times when it makes perfect sense, there are times when a piece of property is of no use to the city, but the bottom line is that we are using an asset that generally does increase in value to offset a short-term budget solution. So our recommendation is the focus should be to meet public policy goals as well when we're selling surplus property. I know that Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Smith both have planned uses for some of the properties that have been identified. Again, we recommend that the process continue and that in those specific cases, housing and sanitation report back on the potential uses of those properties. They would still need to be declared surplus. But we also suggest identifying other properties that could be sold in place if these identified properties cannot be sold. One example is Fire Station 4. I've already spoken to Mr. Weezer about that. It is in his district. It is surplus. The new station will open sometime in June and we believe that that is certainly one immediate example that can be used to substitute into the properties that are identified. We discussed Mr. Smith's proposal about redeployment of the LAPD officers at the airport. In essence, the concept would be to redeploy those officers so that they are working what had formerly been overtime at LAX and have them redeployed so that those stations and that overtime work is handled by police officers who are on regular time. It would mean a shift in deployment. However, it would also be cheaper for the airports because they'd be paying straight time for the officers and it would also save the city money because we'd be getting more reimbursement for the officers that are there. The next section of our report deals with the mayor's belt tightening measures. I want to stress here that, as we say in the report, all of these proposals need to be explored, all of these proposals can and should generate savings and in no way does our report suggest that we not pursue these. The issue, however, as we sit here today, is a short-term issue and our concern is that these measures would not generate significant savings in the current fiscal year. Again, I won't go through all of these in detail, they are in the report, but again, I want to stress, we strongly recommend that we pursue these. We do recommend an immediate reduction in the fleet back to 2001 levels, in the executive fleet, that will result in about 49 cars that would be turned back into the pool. And then although the vast majority of any of those cars can't be sold because they're all encumbered with MICLA or some other form of lease, but the older cars in the fleet could then be sold and replaced by these newer cars. So there are some savings that could be generated immediately on that. And essentially, the third section of our report deals with long-term issues. There have been questions about documentary transfer tax. I know the mayor's been working on that. We've been working on that for several months at the request of council members. There should be some revenue there. There should be some revenue there, but the bottom line is that it will probably require state law changes to access the information necessary to collect the revenue. I've been talking to Mr. Fujioka, and we plan to jointly develop a sponsorship proposal to get the legislation changed, so that information will be readily available. We discuss various motions that, again, are longer-term solutions, and how we propose and plan to address those, including extending the look-back period on business tax and various other changes to help increase tax compliance without raising taxes themselves. And finally, we do address the issue of the '08-'09 budget. We've done some rough calculations. As Ms. Siskin indicated, it is going to be a very difficult year in just simply calculating what it's going to cost to fund the police hiring plan for next year, and maintain sanitation and fire facilities. The cuts in all of the departments would have to be anywhere, it looks like, between 5% and 11% to 14% in all other departments in order to fund just those services. Now, keep in mind, the departments have already undertaken a 5% to 10% cut this year, because of no money for the COLAs and the reductions that were proposed in the current-year budget. So we certainly are going to be addressing very serious issues of prioritization of services, and we can't stress enough how important it is to look at structural balances or structural actions in order to put the city's budget in structural balance. So in essence, that is our report, and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Also, I'd like to ask the Controller's Office, come up, just give us a thumbnail on where we are on cash flow, because many of the things discussed today are talking about closing the gap on '07-'08, but many of these, all of these decisions will impact '08-'09, and we need some assessment as to the Reserve Fund and just cash flow that will take us through this year into next year.
Bill Lamb from the Controller. We have a concern about the Reserve Fund. In the first half of the fiscal year, because of the timing of our receipts versus our expenditures, we're short $500 to $600 million. We balanced that with a combination of activities, one of which, and probably the most important, is the flexibility that we have under the charter to borrow from the Reserve Fund. The mayor and council have taken strides to increase the Reserve Fund so that we have additional flexibility. However, at one point, in order to get through the fiscal year, we had to take the Reserve Fund down to $3 million. Looking at what we're having with expenditures going forward, looking at the revenue, we are concerned about the Reserve Fund and about our ability to deal with cash flow next year, in that the areas that we traditionally go to to borrow cash are uncertain at this point and not well-defined.
Colleagues, I think we have a thumbnail of where we are on this year's budget, and I think what would be helpful, number one, so that we go through the CLA's report as we do with the regular budget, and start with recommendations on page 13. What I'd like to do before we get to any recommendations is to ask you to join me in making a recommendation that we take the police hiring issue off the table on this report, that in moving in that direction, that we have classes in April, May, and June that we can consider. And in taking that off the table, I'd ask the CLA and CAO and the mayor's office to get us in Budget and Finance as quickly as we can, as accurate attrition figures as we can, to begin to assess what those classes should be in the upcoming three of the last months of the fiscal year. But colleagues, if we go through, starting with page 13, Recommendation 1 through A through F, I'd like to see if we can walk through those and get your concurrence, and then I think we can pretty well orderly handle this report. Mr. Miller, if you could just take us quickly through A through F and hit the high points, and then we could vote on items 1 through A through F.
Certainly. Item, well, one in general.
I'd like to spend it, Mr. Miller.
And how you want to do this from a logistical standpoint, from Ms. Perry chairing, because some people may have questions on each of those items, how you want us to press, or would you rather have general questions first?
What we should do is just ask that item be special like we do in the budget. So item 1A or whatever, if you want to pull it, just ask for it on special. And I think we give a little overview first, and then we can go for them. Thank you very much.
Before we get into the details, Mr. Alarcon has asked for just a brief consideration in recognizing a special visitor here in the chamber. It will only take a few minutes.
Members, I apologize for the interruption. We have a very special guest. Today, the mayor signed the Spain-Neuter ordinance, and we're very pleased that 45 days from now, the ordinance will take effect. We have a guest from the Humane Society of the United States, the president, Wayne Pacelli. He is the president and CEO of the Humane Society of the United States, and he has an announcement to make.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt your proceedings, but I wanted to, on behalf of the Humane Society of the United States, extend our deepest thanks to you for passing this ordinance on Spain-Neuter. You're really setting a new benchmark across the country for how we treat our animals and how we need to exhibit responsibility. It was especially important to us today that the conference occurred, because it is National Spain Day USA, and I was grateful to receive this beautiful proclamation from the city of Los Angeles on this issue. And I want to particularly thank Councilmember Alarcon and Cardenas for their incredible leadership on humane issues, and I want to thank all of you again for your support. Thank you for taking a moment. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you. So, Mr. Parks, if you want to proceed.
Okay. What we'd ask the CLA to do is go through and give us a brief overview of item 1A through F. If any council members have a concern on any issues, call your specific item special, and we'll come back and deal with them.
Okay, so what that entails is we have four people in the queue. So are you suggesting that we go through it one at a time and let them speak to their specific items, or?
I think if we go through the entire recommendations, we'll capture everybody, and then we can deal with the specials.
And then we'll go with the, we have to allow them to speak, though, so I'll go to the queue after that, then?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, Mr. Miller needs his mic on.
There we go. The first recommendation, in essence, wraps in the CAO report and the Budget and Finance Committee report, and then outlines some of the changes that are proposed in our report. A is the restoration of $900,000, $500,000 of which is for graffiti abatement, the other $400,000 is for community beautification grants. It's the restoration of $500,000 in B to the library department. And C is the restoration of $600,000 for left turn signals. D references the surplus property, and in essence instructs the Housing Department and Sanitation to report back on the potential uses of those properties. Again, the process would continue to declare them surplus, but they would have to come back to council for a final disposition of those properties.
Let me ask just a clarification. On item 1A, what would be the source of revenue? So everybody's clear on that.
But again, with the elimination of the March Police Academy class recommendation, you have approximately $1.1 million. The total in A is $900,000, so the source of funding would be those. However, the library reduction and the left turn signal reduction totals $2 million. So what we're looking here is at $900,000, excuse me, a $900,000 shortfall if you eliminate the million dollars from the police academy.
All right, so that would come out of the neighborhood council, and then the change in the street furniture.
The street furniture payment, yes.
Okay, so let me just ask for discussion if we can have 1A and B on special. Anyone else have any specials?
Mr. Rosendahl? Question or two about item number D.
All right, you're in the queue, so.
Special, 1D.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about that.
Any other questions, or specials?
We have Councilwoman Gruel in the queue also.
Yeah, so I think the way Mr. Parks wants is just call specials during this time, and then we'll go back to our items. 1C for me on this one, because this is just on 1, correct?
1A through F. Any other specials?
Mr. Labonge of Ms. Han, do you have any special?
We're going to get through the whole report.
You want us to pull from these recommendations?
Yeah, we're just dealing with item 1A through F, if you have any specials.
Out of those five.
And then we'll go to item 2.
Okay.
Out of those five.
All right.
Okay, so we go to recommendation 2.
Recommendation number 2 is a, in essence, clarification to see a recommendation. It involves the borrowing of money from the state because of the delay in gas tax receipts to continue the street work.
On that, so just on some questions, maybe we should just call 2 special.
2 special, and then also, one technical correction is on 2A, Roman numeral 4, that it should be IB fund as opposed to trust fund, is that correct? The 1B? Okay. Okay, and then, Ms. Gruel, you call all of 2?
Yes, just in a general conversation about our 1B projects and the process by getting those funds. I just want to have some clarification.
So all of 2 is special?
Mr. Parks, I was just out of the room for a moment. On A, did anybody call A special?
Which one?
Okay, on A, on this one right here, 1A. 1A, is this recommendation right here?
Yes, 1A and B are called special.
Very good, for the library and for graffiti abatement.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, so we go to recommendation 3.
Recommendation 3 is, most of these are instructions to report back on the belt-tightening measures, with exception to A. A is the recommendation to reduce the executive fleet back to 2001 levels, which, again, this is a typo, it's 46 vehicles total in A.
It's 46 instead of 26.
Correct.
In A. Sorry, pardon?
3A special?
3A special.
I would like to look at C and E. 3, C and E.
Any other specials on 3? We have that one technical correction, and 3A is 46. Okay, we go to item 4.
Recommendation 4, that funding transfer is related to item 1, so I think that will be discussed. That's for A and B. 4D would be, as you proposed, Mr. Parks, that would be eliminated. That has to do with the police March Academy class.
So I'm sorry, could you say, which ones are deleted now, 4?
4D.
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 Right, A, B, and C are related to item 1, which is.
As is B. B also is related to the police officers.
Correct, I'm sorry, you're right.
So it would be B, D.
And D.
B and D.
B and D would be taken out.
Taken out. And we call special 4A. Any other specials?
Yeah.
And no, HI?
Mr. Rosendahl and all the colleagues, if you could address the chair, because the city clerk is desperately trying to keep track of everything that you're pulling out, and he's making a list, so that when we vote, he could recite back to you exactly what you're voting on. So instead of talking back and forth to each other, please direct your comments in the chair, so we can make sure that we're doing what is accurate, what's being asked.
Okay.
Okay.
On item 4.
Madam Chair, I'm looking right at you.
Okay, look right at me. I'm over here, right here. I see you.
I would like to look at 3, 4I.
3 and 4I.
No, 4I, 4I.
4I. Got that, Mr. Clerk? Okay, now I'll call on you. Ms., okay, is that it for you, Ms. Han?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Gruel.
F2, and F2 and G. F2 and G.
Mr. Labonge.
As we follow this, there's just one thing I want to ask Mr. Parks, if I may, Madam Chair. On 4D, about the personnel department, reduction of the size, 45 recruits.
That's been moved off the table.
I understand that, but just a technical question. Madam Clerk, what is today's date? Yeah?
Today is February 26.
And when is March?
On Saturday.
Like, so we're doing this four days before it's happening?
No, no, we're taking it off the table. The class will go forward.
The class will go forward. Class, so we're not, no one who's expected to show up on March 1st for this class is going to be told not to show up.
Yeah, I don't know what the date of the class, but the March class will go as planned.
Okay, just add a technicality on it. Thank you, that's very good.
All right, that satisfies your concerns?
No, the other one I wanted to say here.
Would you like to relax now and sit down?
No, I know, I know, I'm just trying to read this here. All this, just a question here, this matter here, because this is a lot of information that is coming at us very quickly. Request orders, submit orders, approve, about street furniture fund and all that. I want to, anything, I understand that, but anything that was a normal service that we count on, because what is disappointing, members, for me, is often we make rule changes right here, and then we go about our business of serving the people of Los Angeles, and the rules have been changed, and we don't have the source to do it.
Mr. Labonge, this portion of our meeting is to call out the special items that we're asking to be considered a special.
Anything that changes the council's.
But you are in the queue, though, so you can speak about this at nauseam in just a minute.
And for Mr. Miller, our very fine CLA.
But you're taking the meeting off track.
I know, I don't want to do that.
Yeah, I know you don't.
On these issues, which ones that affect us, which ones that affect us?
But we're going to talk about that in just a minute, and you're in the queue. You come after Mr. Rosendahl, and again, you'll have all the time that you need. So have we finished calling all the specials from colleagues? Have we done that? Mr. Rosendahl.
When Ms. Siskin did her financial analysis, I have a question on that about revenue sources.
Okay, now you're in the queue, too. You're coming after Ms. Gruel. You can ask your substantive questions at that point, because I intend to go through the queue before we actually go through all this voting.
Thank you.
So that everybody gets their questions answered, no one will be ignored. Except 4K.
4K.
4K. Got that, Mr. Clerk? Okay, great. All right, have we covered everybody's special requests?
I guess, what if we find one?
Break consideration.
Mr. Parks.
Okay, what I'd like to do now is that we have the specials, if we can go through the queue, and then go through the items.
Yeah, very good.
I think we'll get there.
Very good. Now, first in the queue, here's the order, Gruel, Rosendahl, Labonge, and Han. So Ms. Gruel, if you would proceed.
Thank you, and I will try to do it related to the items I called special, so we may be able to handle those. One is, thank you, Mr. Parks, for taking the million dollars off the table, and the police officers, we all know that is the number-one issue for us, the last resort, and we still have a 40-plus million dollars to find in the budget. And so I think that we, there's unanimity here as to not having that in the CLA report, and it's being taken out. So I just want to reiterate that again, there are no police officers hiring being stalled at this point in time at all. They will go forward with their March class. The other issue before us that I think is important is to recognize that this is not a dollar-for-dollar, so that there are certain times in which we are doing our budget in May, where we have to, if you want to spend money, you have to find money, and we need to do that. But today is not where we're getting to the balanced budget. We're going to come back next week with some additional cuts. So if you have ideas, you should put those on the table today for us to discuss, because you still have to find somewhere around $40 million. Is that correct? Yes. Okay, $40 million. One is, I just want to thank both the CAO and CLA on the items of community beautification and the graffiti. We felt very strongly that we could be penny-wise and pound-foolish, that if we did not provide funds to remove graffiti, we would see gang issues, all the other things surrounding, if you could not immediately remove the graffiti, and for those nonprofits that were providing that service. On item B, which, excuse me, item C, which I called special, the only thing I wanted to add to that is, and I am truly left, you know, I hope someday I'll be called not only the pothole queen, but the left-hand turn queen, is that, getting those installed. But I think it is important to find out from the Department of Transportation, I asked Rita Robinson this morning, as to timing, if we're going to use that money between now and the end of the year. If they can guarantee that we're going to actually use those for the. of the year, if they can guarantee that we're going to actually use those for those left-hand turn signals. If not, we have to reassess that, but I think we should add that language in there to report back if they're actually going to use that. Secondly, is on item number two, which is on the whole issue of our one B, and being able to do that. As those of you that are in the Budget Committee know, we proposed this during that meeting, to look at this possibility, so that we would not stop 65 miles of roadway being repaved, and that we could use this kind of borrowing back, as we will anticipate this money in September, some actions have taken place, and if maybe the CAO and CLA could just explain this, so everyone understands what is going to happen on the one B, as well as, Ms. Sisson, you mentioned, the importance of our projects moving forward, and our list, which Mr. Rosendahl and I are making sure, where there's been a task force in the city, how we apply for that fund, and to hold my time, thank you.
Well, in essence, what two would do, would be to borrow against already approved one B projects, so that we could continue the street work, and that would then be backfilled by the gas tax money when we receive it in September. That, in a nutshell, is what this action would do.
And that's, the state has indicated that is okay to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they have.
And so if you could, Ms. Sisson, on the one B, there were some concern you raised about making sure we got our lists forward for the allocation.
That's correct. As you are probably aware, there has been an extensive task force that has worked to identify one B eligible projects throughout the city, that task force has included representatives of the CLA, my office, Mayor's Office, and department heads that have eligible projects. That list has been vetted, it is currently in committee, and we need to move that forward so that the city does have on record its approved eligible one B list. When we were at Budget and Finance, there was some discussion from the state that they would need some sort of eligibility list, and both Jerry's staff and my staff have worked very closely together, and the state has clarified that we no longer have to have those projects to get this money going. But I think it would be prudent for the council to move those items forward, so that we do have that list in place, so that we can apply for further...
Ron, as you know, we set up a task force specifically in the city to, so we were not behind the curves. So it was news to us that the state said, before they even told us how to access it, that we had to have an approved list.
That's correct.
And so I think I wanted to make that clear, that we've been moving on those items. Now the state has said, we'd like you to have an approval list. Mr. Rosendahl, I moved that out of, we had it in our committee, I think, last month, saying that we needed to make sure, again, as we have in some of these other projects, to talk to every council member about what will be included in that list, so we are able to successfully have a list that is comprehensive and fits our priorities. And so, just, you know, I know you will make sure that we're at the right point to be able to apply for those. And my seconds are going to go out, so I will push my button again for those items I have called special, other than the two I took care of, which I tried to do in my kind of opening remarks, but I think, colleagues, it is important to send the message, and we were out in Mr. Rosendahl's district last night with a very good turnout, and I know your staff did a great job in getting people out there to talk about important issues on budget, and that both the CAO and CLA gave a overview, that this is the toughest budget year I know I have ever participated in as a council member, and many, I think, mentioned, you mentioned is the toughest one, you've been in since 23 years of being in the city, and so we are going to have to make tough decisions, but I think the message we're sending today is, we're going to continue hiring our police officers, that is the number one priority for this council, that we're going to look at the delivery of basic city services as our number one priority, that we're also going to look at ensuring, we're looking at the whole city, not just our own districts, but citywide, which you'll hear me talk about in a minute on the item, but also, Karen and I have talked about the importance of looking at each department and saying, you were created in whatever year it may be, 1965, and what was the priority services we were providing, and have we gotten off our mission to what we need to provide in the city, and I think we have to ask ourselves that when we have a $300 million to $500 million budget deficit for next year. So this is the only, the first time in which we are having to make some tough decisions, it will not be the last time, and so I just want to thank you, I know you are the bearer of bad news, and are the ones that get chastised for some of the recommendations you make, but we'll have to make those tough decisions as we go forward.
Thanks for pushing my button again. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate your comment about last night, my district is very engaged in all the issues, and they come out to a lot of things, and that's democracy at its best. I just want to make, I have specials that we call, we'll deal with specifics, but Karen, you said our revenue generation is going to be flat, it's not going to increase. There is gold in the gutter that we should be picking up, it has to do with our meter system. How much money do we take in from meters at this point throughout the city?
It appears that from on and off-street meters, for 2008, our estimated revenue is $21.6 million, and we're forecasting for next year about 36 or 37, which would include a projected rate increase in hours of operation.
By projected rate increase, what are you talking about?
We are now looking at some proposals, Department of Transportation's been very active in looking at proposals for, both looking at the hours of operation of the meters and also potential rate restructurings for the meters.
So let's get into real language, it's 25 cents now to park your car, what are we looking at moving into?
Boy, I don't know the actual specifics of the proposal, because we've looked at it basically...
Okay, let me just say about gold in the gutter, there's money there to be picked up, first of all, we need to put meters throughout the city. There are some areas that have no meters at all, number one, okay? Number two, if you look at the new technology, where you can punch in your, on your cellphone or use your credit card, I was at UCLA the other day, and they charged $2 for an hour, not 25 cents. Now, I'm not suggesting the city needs to go to $2, but it certainly needs to go from 25 cents to 50 cents and maybe to a buck, okay? You talk about your revenue stream, which is what, you just said 21 million? How about bringing it up to 100 million? By increasing the number of meters in the city, and by doing a study of other cities, just look around you, you know, we have other cities that don't charge 25 cents. When did we charge 25 cents? How long ago was that?
Yeah, I don't know that.
Before my time, for sure.
Ms. Bearman, the city was calling the back end, asking about 50 cents in the proposals to move to $1.
Okay, well, I look forward to seeing the actual clarity of, number one, putting more meters throughout the city in areas where there are no meters, two, the technology of the new meter that we have that's user-friendly, where you can do it with your cellphone or your credit card, and three, looking at a restructuring of the rate that would take it from $21 million to the General Treasury to $100 million, okay? And how do we get to that $100 million? Look at the surrounding cities, how they've been doing it, look at other places around the country, there is a revenue stream, that's why I call it gold in the gutter, let's bring it back into the city coffers. I look forward to that report back, so don't say our revenues are going to be flat if we get more aggressive in figuring out other revenue streams. And if we're able to do that, then those kinds of monies should be there for the left-hand turn signals, they should be there for the synchronization and the timing of lights, they should be used for the graffiti removal, these are programs that should not be abandoned, but a revenue stream would help move forward with them. So I look forward to that kind of aggressive report back on that, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, good work there, Rosendahl, I like that, but the first parking meter in the city of Los Angeles, 1949, was on Langisham, and at the time, and we make about, I think, $42,000 a day or more per meter, but on that idea, Mr. Rosendahl, if they look at that, some of the cities, Pasadena and West Hollywood and Santa Monica have nighttime meters. Would you want nighttime meters on Abbott Kenny?
I would like to look into that, as well as I'd like to look at our parking lots at the beach, on how we deal with that.
Very well, now, all this money, though, doesn't it go into a parking meter fund?
It does.
So we're asking to change that?
Well, it would require changing the use of the money that goes into the parking fund, yes.
And then that becomes a problem, so that's something we should think about, remember what our jobs are, I know this is a crisis, I think the worst crisis, Wendy, is after Prop 13, when it restructured everything, but I remember then, years later, I talked to then Mayor Han, he said only eight people lost jobs, and they were painters at the time, but that's a little history. Here's the thing I want to ask you, city attorney, I'm waiting for an ordinance to strengthen our ability to give people citations for littering, and I think that's a revenue, because how much do we get on, like, tickets, when we give out tickets? What's our, what's the city's receipt on tickets? Hold my time. Downton Divinity, under $100 million?
Just a point of order, that I wanted them to tell us where that parking meter money now goes as part of that question with the report back.
Thank you.
Okay, the parking tickets is about $127 million.
Right, alright, well, I'm for clean streets, and the way we do it is, we knock on the door of the shopkeeper and say, if you don't clean this street next week, I'm going to come by and give you a parking ticket, same comparable $50 ticket, so everybody cleans it up, so it doesn't go into the river, doesn't go there. Want to ask you on the, and there's some items in Ms. Gruel's committee on parking revenue fund that we're going to be discussing later on that, but also, when there's an accident out there, somebody runs into a street light, a traffic light, how soon do we recover the cost to replace that? Hold my time.
You know, I think we really probably need to have someone from DOT on those items.
I understand that, but you're the city administrator, you're like the city manager, Karen, I understand that, but I want to tell you, because I see we're cutting out overtime, and I see people in the middle of the night, right in front of Firehouse 56 the other day, someone crashed into a bus bench there, and he didn't have to move the fire truck, the person was okay, but did go to the hospital, but now it sits no bus bench. I just think we should try to recover that as quick as we can.
And we do go after that money, how quickly we receive it, I think, you know, depends on who we're going after and what other steps we may need to take if we don't get payment immediately.
Okay, and hold my time after the question, how much money in fiscal, last fiscal year, 2006, 2007, did we roll over to this fiscal year?
Not a lot, it was about, I believe, about 30, between 30 and 40 million.
30 and 40 million.
And we're projecting for this year for it to be closer to 10 to 15.
And is anybody looking, and I'm a proponent for more clean air, there's about 600 trash trucks that collect trash in the city, I know it's very emotional, but if we bounced our trash days from Tuesday through Friday, would we save any money? You know, and is that, are we looking to restructure some of that?
We're actually looking at a number of options, council member, that include, first of all, how we deploy the staff resource we have, not only in sanitation, but also in transportation and other departments, and we're also looking at how we provide service, and whether we can do it differently and more efficiently.
Right, if you could hold my time, I think I asked that after each question, but it never got held.
I did hold your time, I just took that one again.
So anyway, on this, do we have the numbers of, I'm a great proponent of the library system, and so proud of the library and librarians and branches, because you go in there and there's teeming with people, children, young and old, do we have the numbers of who go to our facilities, at our parks, at our libraries, so we make the right decisions?
Yeah, we do have that information, and we can...
So you could say that at the Cole Street Playground, at the North Hollywood Park, they have 2,000 people signed up, or whatever the case may be, for programs or whatever, I think it's real important to have that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll ask specific questions later, but I do want that ordinance for trash and citation for keeping our streets clean.
Thank you, Ms. Han.
Okay, thank you, I just want to get this process straight, I know our city clerk wants to get it straight, too. Mr. Parks, you're thinking that we're going to go through the ones that we called special, each one, we'll ask questions about it, and then we'll decide whether or not we want to move forward with that particular recommendation. Okay, so these comments we're all making right now are sort of general, but we'll give another opportunity as we come to the item to ask more questions. I think that makes sense, and I agree with that, I've just used some of my seconds to say that. I think for me, and I think, a lot of us are feeling this, I think the most difficult comment you made, Karen, was, we are projecting no revenue growth. That's the one I think is tough, and it's also sort of, we think this is bad, well, next year, it looks like it gets worse, you know, and I think for me, I want to know, you know, why aren't we projecting any sales tax growth? Does that mean no, you know, no one's going to be coming to Los Angeles, nobody's going to be buying anything, no one's going to be spending anything, and what are we doing to counteract that? I think for me, all these belt tightening measures, I think we're all willing to do them, I think we're willing to make the hard choices, but it doesn't seem like it gets us more than like one notch on the old belt, it doesn't really feel like we're saving enough money to really make an impact, particularly next year. So I think, I think the one area where we should be spending a lot more time and energy is this idea of revenues. Where can we get more revenues in the city? And this is what I would really like to see, all of you kind of go back to the drawing board, and I know we've got that, one of the items is instruct all city departments to look at ways to increase revenues, I think everyone, and maybe we do a budget day, colleagues, where we spend the day listening to every possible idea to raise revenue, some of them are going to be crazy, some of them we're not going to do, but there might be some ideas where we can actually generate revenue. I actually introduced last week the notion of imposing an oil extraction fee for the barrels of oil that are extracted from the city of Los Angeles, we don't do that currently. Most municipalities do, Long Beach does, we could, you know, a barrel of oil sells for, what is the going rate these days, $100? Okay, what if we, Long Beach, for instance, puts 40 cents on that, I think we should suggest a dollar, since we haven't been doing it for so long, that, we don't even know how many barrels of oil we extract in the city, the county, I think, extracts 27 million, so, and we're usually about a third of the county, so, you know, maybe we do 10 million barrels of oil, if, you know, that would be a way to generate revenue. I think advertising is certainly something we should be looking at, naming rights, and I think everything should be on the table right now, things we thought were disgusting before, or, you know, just really, you know, pandering to advertising, I think we're in a real crisis, and I think it's going to get worse, and I think, I don't know about my colleagues, I would like to see all those proposals, let's see what it would look like to let people advertise on our city vehicles, on our trash receptacles, on our, you know, let's just look at it, and see what kind of money that would generate. Again, I think it's a different time, and things that we never would even consider before, I think we have to consider now, and maybe, you know, those go away someday when we're in a better situation, but I have some more specific questions on those items, but that would be my wish for all of you, is to really go back in, get all the brightest minds, looking at how do we raise revenue, what are we doing to increase...
And Ms. Han, I need you to conclude.
Okay, I'll press again, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Seine.
Thank you, according to the title, it is belt tightening measures, so we're looking at everything to save money, correct, Mr. Miller?
Correct.
What about the sacred cows? Have we discussed those?
Which sacred cows are you referring to?
The Public Works Commission, that is a sacred cow. How much do we spend on that, a year?
Offhand, the total budget of Public Works Commission...
It's probably close to between $1.5 and $2 million.
$1.5 and $2 million, I know that's been brought up in the past, we have a police commission, a fire commission, Wrexham Parks Commission, we have commissions, no compensation, they do the job, and nothing against the people on the Public Works Commission, but each has a general manager. So the question is, why do we need a commission that gets paid with general managers to carry out the responsibilities? Has that been explored, if we're talking about serious belt tightening?
It has, some years ago, I believe, under Mayor Han, there was discussions about department consolidations, there were discussions about eliminating the Board of Public Works, there was, as I recall, the appointment of a director of public works, which I think was done in anticipation of eliminating the board, and, but essentially it didn't happen, so I, again, I think for the fiscal year coming up, I think you're going to be facing issues that are going to require that kind of analysis, are consolidations appropriate, you know, hard choices about what to eliminate and what to retain, so that you continue to deliver the core city services.
Because I'm looking at a serious issue with the finances, or lack of finances, and if we want to be serious about something, turn it in your cellphone or your BlackBerry, not going to save a whole lot of money, but if you're talking saving substantial amounts of money, the other questions about consolidation, you have a number of different departments with general managers, that I look at Department of Human Services, where it comes from aging, children, youth, and families, disability, status of women, cultural affairs, has there ever been a serious expiration of consolidation of a Department of Human Services, and have those functions performed, but not each one individually with general managers and the staff, et cetera, to be some serious savings of dollars, and still deliver the service to the community of Los Angeles? the service to the community of Los Angeles?
There has, really at the same time, under the same time period, under Mayor Hahn. That was seriously looked at, there were proposals made and an analysis done of what that would look like. I think what really happened is, is that, since things can take time, the situation changed. The revenue picture picked up and those consolidations were never acted upon. But yes, it has been looked at in the past.
So maybe it's time to reexamine it again, if we're serious about the situation with the lack of funding. And the other question, cost recovery. When the police department goes out to a drunk driving crash, when the fire department responds to an incident, do we have cost recovery? I know when someone's transported to a hospital in ambulance, there's a charge and hopefully some kind of cost recovery. Do we have cost recovery in place when a drunk driver plows in and there's a police investigation? Or when an incident takes place, do we have cost recovery from our law enforcement? Do we have cost recovery in any other category where we deliver a service? If someone spills a load of sand on the roadway, we have to send out street services to pick it up. Is there a cost recovery for the expense that we go through to clean that mess up?
Well, again, I think that there are a number of different situations we're talking about there. In the context of police, there certainly is some cost recovery through court fines. We'd have to explore whether or not we're coming close to actually recovering our costs.
I'm talking about, not court fines, I'm talking about an individual, for example, there's laws on the books, they've been on the books for a long time. A drunk driver plows into something, there's a police investigation. There are, on the books, a law that says, we can do cost recovery. We can charge that person, in addition to the court, in addition to the insurance company, we can charge that person for the expense. Department of Transportation does traffic control, police department does an investigation. There is cost recovery on that individual. And if we look at how many people get involved in situations in Los Angeles, there looks to be a tremendous amount of money, following up with Janice Hahn's issue about raising additional dollars. There's dollars that the law currently permits us to go cost recovery, and I don't know if the police department's doing it, or the Department of Transportation's doing it, or other entities are doing it, which is additional revenue. If someone creates a problem, there's a cost to that problem that we could recover and help maybe bring a few more dollars in to help with this budget. That needs to be explored also.
Well, looking into all of that, I mean, on ambulance, obviously there are ambulance fees for people that are transported. That has always been a difficult situation in terms of the amount of collection. The fact of the matter is that there are a fair number of indigent patients and it's just not feasible to collect. So there are multitudine issues that we'll get back to you on, and it's certainly going to have to be part of the '08, '09 budget discussion.
Okay, and I know that there was a recommendation, 13 cars from council, we've got 15 council members, and if we're going to cut 13 cars from 15 council members, I think if you go 15 cars, each council office gives up one car, I don't think that's excessive, but the formula I saw said 13 cars, I don't know how you define 13 from 15.
Because there are two council offices that did not accept the addition of a car. So two of your colleagues have one fewer cars than the rest of you do.
So we would all be even if 13 gave it up? And that was the additional car that we received?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I'll join in with everybody else to make that. But I think that if we're going to do something serious, instead of these little bits and pieces, something serious, the big expenditures, and then go after that, define up what we can do to balance this budget. And I support the public safety, but at the same time, if we don't have the money, we can't deliver the services. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Before you cut me off, I'm done.
Before I cut you off. I do know, however, that Mr. Luther here knows on the booking fees that we worked very hard on, and there were some challenges in that, but I think it might be helpful to provide a report to everyone on the booking fees, because that was our effort to recoup dollars based on those who have been arrested and ultimately convicted of a crime, and to get the judges to actually get us that money back which is under their purview. Okay, so, what we're now going to do, because there are no other speakers on the queue, we're going to go back to our list, which I made as well, and I think Ms. Perry did as she was here. On item number 1A, Mr. Parks and Mr. Labonge, called 1A Special.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On item 1A, one of the things, and I think Mr. Miller hit it earlier, was that this, if we ask for this $900,000, it puts us into a additional allocation of funds, and I'd like to comment on 1A, B, and C at one time, is that if we move forward on the $600,000 for the transportation left turns, item 1B is an error. We basically gave direction in committee to tell the CAO and the Library Department to get together, but to maintain the $2 million cut. It was never intended, the committee, to give them an additional $500,000. So that brings us up to where maybe, in looking at items 1A, B, and C, that we're only about $400,000 short from the money we recovered from the street furniture and the surplus neighborhood council funds. So I would like that we support, that we maintain the $900,000 for the graffiti, the community beautification, community cleanup supplies, that we look at the funds that were recovered from the street furniture, the surplus neighborhood council, and that we support that with those funds. And then, again, with the correction on 1B, that's $500,000, that's off of the revenue side, that we have asked that they maintain the cut, but find where they may have a more comfortable level on allocations.
So you're suggesting item B, in essence, be eliminated?
Well, 1B should be eliminated. It also affects 2B on the next page, because we're talking about moving money, but 1B is not a correct comment from the Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you. So you'll make that change on 1B and on 2B to reflect that change.
And in support of 1A?
In support of 1A. I don't, Mr. Labonge? Mr. Labonge? Okay. If not, we dealt with item 1C, which was the item I had called special, I spoke and made the amendment earlier on 1C, which was for the department to come back and indicate if they would be able to complete those 16 additional, and if not, that they would come back, and that may be potential savings as well. Ms. Alacon, you have pressed your button, but it is, what we're doing right now is going through each item. Do you have a specific item you called special you wanted to talk about, or general? If there's an, maybe, if you look on the items, on the recommendations, if there is one of the items that we've called, none of the items that are here. Okay, then maybe before we go to 1D, Mr. Alacon, if you'd like to make your comments now.
I'm just curious about the Daily News article regarding the DWP transfers and the fact that the court did not allow for a summary judgment in the city's favor, and how that throws an incredible monkey wrench into our prognostication with regard to the budget. So could you give the council some advice as to where we stand with the DWP transfers in light of the court's decision?
Well, it's important to remember that in this budget, the '07, '08 budget, we did not plan to get that transfer. We had not budgeted the 30 million coming in this year because--
From water.
From water. And so, but we do continue to receive the power transfer. So what we have done is not counted on revenue transfers from the water fund, but we are looking at revenue transfers from the power fund. And I apologize, I have not seen the Daily News article.
Does the court case include water and power transfers?
The court case that is pending right now is just on the water transfer, and in fact, the portion of the state constitutions that's cited actually excludes power.
Okay.
So we do feel confident about that.
Okay.
What the article referred to, actually, what the court did not do is give a summary judgment.
Right.
In my capacity running the bond programs for some years, I've been involved in a lot of validations, and it's really unusual for a court to issue a summary judgment on a validation if somebody opposes it. So we are being opposed by the Harvard, Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association, so what will occur now is it will actually go into trial. So it does not mean that the transfer is not legal, it's simply a process issued through the courts.
But the state decisions recently have really put this up in the air.
In some cases, and again, I wouldn't want to discuss our strategy in open session, but there are some differences between the city of LA and what you're referring to--
I'm not asking for a legal strategy, I'm just saying from a budget forecasting perspective. So the first question is whether or not we have incorporated that into your analysis.
And we are not counting on revenues from the water revenue fund either this year in this current budget year, nor are we counting on the next year.
So if we prevail in court, for example, that would give us $30 million this year.
That's correct.
That might be part of the 37 million shortfall. I just think it's important for my colleagues to know that. Before we start looking for more things to cut, if we prevail in this case, I think you all know my position on this, but for the purposes of a budget discussion, I think it's important for us to know whether or not we're going to get the money. Do we know when that decision might be made?
It's really unlikely. It'll be this fiscal year. There will now actually be a trial, and even if we're successful, one would assume that they'll appeal.
So it would be prudent--
So it could be a couple of years.
It would be prudent to exclude the $30 million for consideration for expenditure this year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon. Okay, we are now on item 1D, Mr. Rosendahl, I believe, called item 1D Special.
Thank you, Madam President, I appreciate that very much. Could we go through that a little bit? Would you read to us what that is, especially for the folks outside watching this?
Sure. This is, actually, I think these are both in your district. This is an instruction for the Housing Department to report back on Fire Station Number 5 and Fire Stations Number 62, on how they would develop these properties or use these properties for affordable housing purposes. So we would still go forward and declare them surplus, which has to happen in any event, but before any properties are sold, they would need to come back to the council and explain how they would be used for affordable housing purposes.
And why is the Housing Department the lead? Why can't the council office and its communities and issues I'm dealing with with homeless, can they give us their input and their advice? But why should they be the ones in charge of this? I'm just curious of that dynamic.
Well, of course, the council office, you know, would hope would give the input and advice, but the Housing Department is ultimately going to have to find the developer, negotiate the terms of any deal to actually develop the properties as affordable housing.
And in the process, because, you know, until they're declared surplus, we really don't have something to work with, and neither that fire station nor that animal shelter have been technically declared surplus so that they could go into an operation where we could put out an RFP and could get people engaged in it. Do you have any sense of how that timeframe would work, since you're under the gun on a deficit here?
Well, it can't be very quick. I think there's a 45-day response time on the surplus declaration, and it needs to be offered for others. Again, under state law, housing has the first priority and needs to be offered to other government agencies. So it can happen quickly, I think that's why the CAO included them in the recommendation. So it would move quickly. But again, then, after that process is done, housing needs to come back here and obviously work with your office and define how these properties would be used for affordable housing.
Because obviously, we have affordable housing plans for both of these properties, one for seniors and a community center at Fire Station 62, the other, the old animal shelter, permanent housing with supportive services for homeless people. And we have the county engaged with us as well, and I'm thrilled about the cooperation in our district. Now, will the Housing Department appreciate where I'm coming from and work with us on that? How does that work? I've never experienced this before, so I'm curious.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I'm sure they would be happy to have a site that they could work with to try to facilitate the development of affordable housing.
I appreciate that, Jerry, because land is very expensive in the 11th District, and I don't want to sell valuable city assets at all. I'd like to make it work for affordable housing. So I look forward to then their report back, that hopefully will give us that comfort level. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. So your recommendation, that is, you're not changing it right now, but that they're going to come back, that there's a process.
How they do it in 30 days, if they got to declare it and then have a 45-day period when it's called surplus, then you go through a process of what you do with that surplus. Those are the mechanics that are a much longer timeframe than a day and a half kind of thing.
I think that's why they don't have the actual dollars associated with that, on that property.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have now handled A, B, C, and D, and item number two, which, unless anyone else wanted to come, and item two, I had my questions answered on item number two.
And for clarification, B is also amended pursuant to the library issue on one, so--
Correct.
Yeah.
And so our next item is Mr. Parks, I believe, on 3A, or was that Mr. Rosendahl? Mr. Rosendahl, did you want 3A on the vehicles?
Yes, if we could talk about that, tell us what 3A is again.
Well, 3A is there is a reduction in, in essence, the executive fleet back to 2001 levels.
What does that mean in real terms, like, for instance, my district and what we're doing there?
It would mean for most council offices, the reduction of one car for council office.
Yes.
And the instruction also is to continue to look at this. We think this is an immediate change that can take place. I do think it's important to note that, you know, these vehicles are not a perk, that these council offices, your council offices all have field offices that you have vehicles in, that your staff uses to go around the community, you have vehicles here. So I think we're going to have to look at the feasibility from an operating standpoint of how many more beyond the '01 levels can be achieved. We certainly think the '01 levels can be achieved. So this would impact the elected offices, actually, the controller has not had any cars added since '01, but it would impact the mayor, the council, and city attorney, and the general services executive pool.
Just curious, and I'm not in favor of this, and I'll explain why, but say that there was one car taken away from each of the council districts, where would those cars go? What would you do with them? They're already paid for, they're hybrids.
Those cars would go back to the city's general pool, and theoretically, older cars in the pool that are no longer encumbered by MECLA would then be sold at surplus.
And those that aren't, when that's five, six years, is basically what you say they are?
Minimum of six years. It really depends on how long we keep them. Some of them, you know, if the useful life is seven or eight years, and they're financed over seven or eight years, it depends on how long we actually keep the vehicle.
So basically, if the car isn't five or six years old yet, it would just go into the pool, it really wouldn't disappear, and why even take it away?
That's right.
Okay, and my second point is obviously my district, which is from Mulholland down to Imperial, you know, Brentwood, the Palisades, West LA, Mar Vista, Venice, Delray, Palms, Westchester Playa, Delray Playa Vista, and LAX. And I have a very engaged electorate, and my deputies are running all over the place in meetings, and for them to use their own car and get the gas and mileage, is there a saving or not, if you use your own car and your own mileage per hour? I mean, are we just looking at sleight-of-hand gameplay?
Well, again, I mean, that's something that we're trying to look at, and we have not at this point gotten a lot of detailed information about the cost comparison. On a per-mile basis, is there savings? Yes, I believe there is. The larger issue of efficiencies and using someone's own car, the policy issues about, you know, transporting other people in a personal car on city business--
Insurance, staff.
Insurance issues, certainly downtown, where people are parked. You know, there are a lot of people that have to walk, you know, five, 10 minutes to get into City Hall. So if they can't get a pool car, then they're spending five or 10 minutes walking to their own car, and then you're paying moders.
Okay, so it's a work in progress--
It's a complicated issue, absolutely.
And there's nothing to be decided today on that issue?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd ask that we amend item 3A to request the CAO, the CLA, and the mayor's office to create a executive fleet policy in which they can report back on the specific numbers, because we have just a little confusion on that item in that the mayor's office numbers were not something that was vetted out with them. So if we can just ask that 1A, or 3A, become a policy decision, or policy that comes back to the council for adoption, that we can then insert the numbers once that policy is created.
We will have that amendment on 3A. Okay, item, yes, Mr. Labonge, did you want to talk about, you weren't in the room when--
I know, that's okay, I'll catch up to you on that, but on this one right here, what is the cost for reimbursement? What do we pay a year for reimbursement in employees in vehicles?
I think, what, 43 cents a mile, I think, is the--
So 43, so how many miles? If there's 472 miles of city, square miles of the city, 7,000 miles of streets, by 55,000 employees, adds up to how much dollars?
You'd have to look at that, and obviously, it depends on how much an individual employee is driving.
All right, but I would think it would be, in our decision, Mr. Parks, valuable to say if we are lowering the fleet, what's the reimbursement cost of that? And also, the other thing I would say, too, from fleets, and I know this from my experience, Water Power runs its fleets a long time. Their trucks are some of the oldest trucks in the city, which is good, that's a value, you know, to run it. Sometimes we, you know, the replacement factor, we get into it, good times, we replace it--
Sometimes we, you know, the replacement factor, we get into it, good times, we replace it. Maybe we've got to run our fleets a little more, longer. I don't know. Then you have the cost, what it costs to repair them or keep them running. That's what Alvin Blaine does a great job in focusing on that for us. So if you could please get that question-
Sure.
-on that, and is it, what kind of committee is going to make this decision? The city council on this, it's coming back to us?
Yes.
Okay, because I think you said it was so right, Mr. Miller, that our staffs do go out to district's office. It is a big city, and it's important to have that vehicle, and also a vehicle that goes out and serves the public. Thank you.
Just for clarification, yes, it would come back to you, provided you approve Mr. Parks's motion to develop the policy.
I got it, but also you can find out what it costs to reimburse.
Yeah.
How much we reimburse building and safety? They don't drive cars, the city has.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Cardenas for an introduction.
Thank you very much, Council President. I think this is relevant. It has to do with staffing. I have a staff member who volunteered to step down, I guess, in light of the budget, perhaps, or maybe the fact that he finally got accepted to the LA Fire Department, of which he's going to start on Monday. So I'll have him take credit for both. Alex Medina is a wonderful human being. He was actually born and raised in Sun Valley, and I met him when he became an intern in my office. And he was so efficient and so dedicated that we made him an offer to be a field aide, and he rose to the ranks to be a field deputy as well, and has done a tremendous, tremendous job. I've been in meetings with him as of late, and literally, people are just upset that he's going to be leaving my office. It's going to be hard to find somebody to replace him because he's the kind of person that just gives 110% in everything that he does. For example, in Sun Valley, it happens to be one of the least street-lit portions of the city of Los Angeles. Just terrible. And that's where he grew up. Grew up in the dark, so to speak. But what Alex did, he realized that the Department of Water and Power has a utilitarian lighting program where if there's actually wooden poles out in your street, they can actually put a light on the pole without having to go through the assessments and things of that nature to do it in the more formal way where they go run the wires and put the poles and the metal poles in the streets, et cetera. Before you knew it, Alex Medina was actually a pro at this, and he has actually had over 200 utilitarian lights installed in just a short period of time. In addition to that, he proved to his colleagues that not only could you get them installed, but you can get them installed quickly. Rather than months or years to wait for the people's lights, they only had to wait several weeks, and in some occasions, even quicker than that. And I also want to point out, his family does not work for the Department of Water and Power. He did it just out of his concern for the community, his dedication to his job, and his willingness to think outside the box, and his willingness to push the buttons the right way. Alex Medina is a very kind individual. If you'll notice, he's probably turning red already. He's very shy, yet at the same time, when it came to getting his work done, you would never know it because he just gets the work done. I'm very proud of him, and I'm very proud to say that ever since I met him, I said, "Hey, would you like to work for me?" He said, "Actually, I'd like to be a firefighter." And I said, "Well, how about if you worked for me in the meantime?" Because with all due respect, I've seen people want to be firefighters for 20 years. I figure he'd probably retire with me. But the tremendous person that he is at his young age, he got accepted to the Fire Department, passed with flying colors, made it to the top of the list, and now he's leaving. So with that, I'd like to say thank you to all of you for joining this presentation. Thank you, Alex Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. I'd like to call Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President, members. And Jerry, I don't mean to belabor the vehicle piece, but when Bill got up and spoke, it made me think about some things here. So the initial recommendation was to eliminate, what, 230-some-odd vehicles or something like that, and then in the event that we did that, we would net maybe a million dollars? Or am I wrong?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so given the recommendation or the suggestion that you have, do we have a projected savings?
You know, I think really at this point it's going to depend on how much the salvage vehicles would be sold for. Again, these are newer vehicles, they would go into the pool, the older vehicles that would be replaced by these would be sold. It probably, at this point, wouldn't be substantial, less than $100,000. But again, we don't think the sale of the 436 is feasible either. For one thing, almost all of those are encumbered by MECLA, so they can't be sold. So by definition, they're going to have to go back to the pool, and the older cars that get bumped would have to be sold. So we've got the operational concerns as well. I think the larger issue here that we would like to stress is fleet management does need to be improved, the entire city fleet, and home garaging needs to be looked at. We do have a specific recommendation in here in that we should look at home garaging for people that are using it for commuting. That is a perk. I will certainly say that that is a perk. I think that that's not common. In my experience, most of the home garage vehicles are used, you know, constantly for work-related purposes. So it's an idea that has to be explored. I think we need to explore it, but it's not going to generate a lot of savings for the current year.
And I think we need to be realistic, members, as we move forward. We do have an awesome situation, and we have to deal with it, but we need to be realistic as well. In my office, we have the district broken up into regions or grids, and every day, the members get in their car and they drive up and down every street and every alley to, you know, suggest that potholes be repaired, to pick up trash, there are bulky items that are on the street. And so I think we need to realistically have this discussion, you know, in the public light because I, to a certain degree, you might consider that the cars that the council staff use as perks if you want to view it through that colored lens, but I personally don't think that that's the case. And so if this is not going to generate a significant savings, especially if you factor in what Tom Labonte said, we would then be paying mileage rates and things of this nature for employees. And then I think that it's easy for me to say to the people who work with me, "Get your butts up and get out in the district," when, you know, they have a car that they know that's going to get them there, but if they have a car that is not that, you know, has a problem, and they can't go out and do their grid work, then the citizens of Los Angeles don't receive the services that they want, need, and expect. So as we move forward through this process, I think we need to be realistic. So I just want to say that I'm really curious, and when you come back, you know, I want to really see what the real savings might be, and if it's something that is negligible, which my gut tells me it will be, then we need to, I think, move on and change the discussion on this. But it is very important, and I'm glad Mr. Rosendahl brought it up.
Thank you. Mr. Labonte?
On the one item, Madam President, that I was out of the room on the A, the only thing I wanted to say to clean Operation Community Beautification is more vining, figure out how to do vining so you get rid of the concrete canvases that they graffiti. Vining is extremely important, and members, a problem that our committee is working on, vining. This is different than this, but Madam President said I could talk about it. Vining, where you have plants grow on the wall that take away the concrete canvases. The other challenge that we have, members, is our murals, which this is a great mural city, has been destroyed by graffiti, but Operation Clean Sweep, Office of Community Beautification doesn't touch murals. But I want to ask Madam President if they come back, whatever, that they do require some allotment to mural restoration out of the graffiti of Bratman. You got that, Jerry?
I do.
Mural restoration. Because if that's a mural between the California and the United States flag, and there's graffiti on that wall, they'll clean all that graffiti up to the mural. They won't even touch it because it's a mural, because it's art, and we can't allow it. I feel so ashamed of myself when I come down Highway 101, the Hollywood Freeway, and that Judy Baca work underneath Grand Avenue is not so grand because it's littered with graffiti. Thank you. I got my point across. 1A.
Thank you, Mr. Labonte. Mr. Parks, just on the clarification on your amendment, are we still going forward with the 46 that are in here, and what you're recommending is additional to come back?
No, I think that because the 26 have not been vetted, we need to hold off on the specific numbers and come back with a policy, and then move from the policy as to what the numbers will be in the future.
Okay, because the 46 that were there included 13 from the-
Council offices.
Council offices.
26 from the mayor's office.
Okay.
But that has not been vetted with them, and so rather than do portions of the numbers, I thought it would be better for us to create the policy and then come back and see how the numbers are impacted.
Okay. So we're holding on that.
We're holding the specific numbers, but we'll get a report back.
Specific numbers, but there is a, I think, acknowledgement by our offices and the mayor's office that we are going to cut the number of vehicles.
That's right.
I think that needs to be said.
We haven't decided, because the mayor's office at this time does not know what their 201 figures are. We know what ours are, but I think until we resolve that in the policy, we need to hold off on the specific numbers.
Okay.
So we don't mislead on what we're cutting and not cutting.
Okay. So it's a coming report back on that item?
Yes, yes.
Again, I think the message there that we want to send is that there is going to be a reduction in the number of vehicles, the number to be forthcoming. Okay. Next item that was called special, I believe, was Ms. Hahn on 3C and 3E, so, but will you get two minutes, reach?
Okay, great. On 3C, on the mandatory work furlough program, I would just like some explanation on the discrepancy that we've seen between what the mayor proposed and what our CLA has indicated. For instance, the mayor had outlined a $20 million savings that employees would take 10 days off, five days off. Where was the discrepancy in what you came back with and how that wasn't going to achieve that amount? And what are you recommending?
Well, first of all-
Call my time.
I think the issue is that it is a voluntary program, and in order to generate those kinds of savings, I think what's going to need to happen is folks are going to have to sit around the table and negotiate furloughs going forward, and I think they're going to have to be required in order to generate significant savings. The information, how the original numbers were based, quite frankly, we haven't seen the backup. But based on the compliance that we were able to get, or so far, the number of people that have actually taken furlough days, it's simply not going to be feasible to be able to generate those kind of revenues through voluntary furloughs before the end of the year.
Right.
I will say, however, that I believe that in the coming fiscal year, either furloughs or layoffs are, I can't imagine how they are not going to be required to keep the budget in balance. So the instruction is for those negotiations to start.
So you're saying, start the negotiations as soon as possible?
Correct, and we strongly encourage people to continue to take voluntary furloughs.
But do you see us moving into a mandatory?
I think we will have probably no choice, so that, well, somehow or other, we're going to have to balance the budget. Now, whether it's mandatory furloughs, whether it's layoffs, you know, I think-
So you said to achieve those kinds of savings, 700,000 employees-
7,000.
7,000 employees would have to take 10 days off.
10 days, based on $290 daily average salary, yes.
Okay.
I'll let Sally clarify, but then I'd like to comment on the recommendation, if I may. I just, Sally Troy, Deputy Mayor, Finance, Performance Management. I wanted to clarify the mayor's proposal and the belt-tightening measures for the voluntary furlough program. This is a first step while Karen and her team work through the process of mutual gains with our unions to find a longer-term solution. The voluntary program is just that, a voluntary program where people can take up to five unpaid days off. If you had full participation of non-critical positions, you could save up to $20 million. In our belt-tightening measure memo to you and to the department heads, we did not specify an amount because we don't know what the participation rate will be. But from what we've seen in other jurisdictions where they've implemented such a program, you've seen up to 20% participation. So, you know, it's likely if we see the same kind of pattern here in the city, you could save at least $4 million this fiscal year if you only have 20%. If you have full participation, it could be as much as $20 million. But really, it's like first step because we had over-
But you said if you had full participation, 7,000 employees taking five days off, it would generate 20 million.
And I don't think 7,000 is the number.
But I think that's what I was asking.
Right.
Our CLA said that, you know, they would have to take 10 days off. So I was just trying to understand where we got the discrepancy.
I think part of the discrepancy is the number because where the CIO did some preliminary estimates on what are non-critical, it's more than 7,000 employees.
There's more than 7,000.
You have 27, at least 27,000 civilian employees in the city. So 7,000 seems like a very, very low number to me.
And we're taking all non-public safety, and we're considering public safety, police, fire, and sanitation.
Right, and not including sanitation, so really, the critical, essential services of the city were in 24 operations, they would not necessarily be, they weren't included in that count.
Jerry, did you want to-
Well, again, we'll go back and check the numbers.
I mean, there's just kind of a big discrepancy between both reports.
Right, but we have seen a lot of people taking furlough days already, even with the limited amount of advertising or, you know, that's been put out there. We've only seen this implemented in probably one actual full pay period, so it's very, very early in the process, but we're obtaining the numbers to determine-
Okay, but you're basically, Jerry, you're basically saying, begin negotiating for a mandatory work furlough.
At least, and I know-
And how long will that take to negotiate?
Well, Karen can address that, but again, I think the point is that to generate real savings, we're going to have to throw it on the table-
Okay.
-to negotiate a program that is not completely optional.
When I think how long it takes us to negotiate even one contract, I can't imagine negotiating this in a timely manner.
Well, the reason I wanted to speak to this recommendation is that I would rather not have a specific outcome dictated as the negotiating strategy. Part of the mutual gains process with the unions is to work with them and to take their ideas. We've had one initial meeting with them. We have many options on the table. One of those options would be mandatory furloughs, but if they have an alternative option that works better for employees and still generates savings, I would like the flexibility to bring that back rather than being basically told, "I need to come away with a mandatory furlough outcome." One, it's not consistent with the process we've been using, which again is one of, you know, shared interest and trying to work together to solve these problems, and two, they may actually have a better idea. And so we shouldn't close our doors to that. They do understand, as I said, I've had one meeting with the coalition unions, and we'll be meeting with the non-coalition unions tomorrow. The coalition unions are at the table with us. They understand the urgency. We went through this financial status report pretty much line by line with them, and so our meeting next week is to basically throw everything on the table and see where we can come out.
But we're not going to see these savings anytime soon.
I would find it, I would be pleasantly surprised if we saw savings of this magnitude this fiscal year.
Yeah.
I think what we're really looking at is addressing the-
Long-term.
Long-term options.
Right, so this should not be in our column of saving money this year.
Although we should be, we are asking them for remedies this year.
Okay.
We are asking them for that, and we've given them, you know, basically, they've seen the voluntary program, the $20 million number from the voluntary furlough program. We've emphasized to them that, given a $40 million deficit right now, and the fact that we only have a very limited amount of time to close that gap, that we need them to work with us on something this year. I just don't know if it'll be this.
Okay, I just want to go to 3E real quickly about the, and I appreciate the idea of not having a blanket policy about not ever purchasing any new equipment. I think that's problematic on a number of levels, and I agree with you, Jerry, that we need kind of a smarter way to look at that because by implementing that, I think we could really be hurting ourselves because we just don't know what equipment we're going to need to purchase that will really, you know, help us carry out a lot of the things we've already agreed to. A pool, I mean, does that mean we can't buy a new pool filter if it's broken? A pool, I mean, does that mean we can't buy a new pool filter if it's broken? Does that mean shutting down the whole pool? I know in Wilmington, I have an elevator right now that's been out for a while prohibiting people from, prohibiting us from complying with ADA. Does that mean if there's a piece of equipment that we need to purchase that that would never happen? So I like the idea of maybe, like our kind of managed hiring freeze, we do a managed equipment purchase, and every time some department needs a piece of equipment, it goes through the process, whether it's budget and finance, we grill them. Is this really important? Is it necessary? Because I think to put a blanket policy right at this time, I think we'll cut off our noses by our face.
If I may just clarify that as well, the mayor's office is working very closely with the departments. There is a process in place. We don't want to impose another process, a more lengthy process where departments have to go through in order to purchase essential equipment. If there is any doubt by a department whether or not they can purchase something, they get clarification from our office as well as the CAO's. There is a system in place to ensure that critical equipment purchases are still being done. So to address your concerns, that is something that is of concern to the mayor, and we're managing that and making sure that essential purchases still continue.
Yeah, Jerry, how would you see that process working?
We're not intending to change the process, similar to what the committee did on managed hiring. I think what we're proposing, the process stays the same, but that my office be involved in that process, so there can be another set of eyes helping make determination about what is in fact vital and what is not.
Right, and at some point, does the, besides, is this coming to the council at any point? Like the managed hiring?
No.
Didn't that, you used to have to come to budget and finance when we, when a department wanted to hire somebody, we scrutinized them?
In the past, yeah, in the past in hiring freezes, yes, but the current process in place is administrative. It does not come to the council, but it's very clear that, at least in terms of managed hiring, you know, public safety, emergency positions, positions vital to support public safety, revenue generating positions.
Right.
Our anticipation is not that this would come to the council either. I think it would be similar criteria, equipment essential for public safety, equipment essential for, you know, delivery of services, or if we don't purchase, as you indicated, it has a substantial impact on a major function. So no, the recommendation is not that it would come to the council.
Walk me through this pool filter. Is that public safety? Is that necessary? Is that, what decision would you two make on if we didn't purchase it, we have to shut the pool down, but is that delivery of services? Is that?
In my view, I would recommend that the piece of equipment be purchased, or that the council have a policy discussion about closing down the pool in its entirety. I mean, I do not want the staff administratively to make that decision.
That's what I'm asking. When would that have come to us? In your process, when would that discussion have come on a policy of closing down pools?
I think if I were involved, it would come from.
That's where I'm getting, where I'm going at.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, if there was a pool filter in my district, and among you guys said it wasn't public safety, it wasn't necessary, it wasn't, you know, and then the pool gets shut down, when does that discussion happen at our level?
Clearly, if a pool was going to be shut down, we would bring it to your attention immediately, and as I said, I would advocate purchasing the equipment. What I would suggest is that in the financial status reports, there be a discussion of equipment purchases that have been approved and denied. I do agree with Ms. Troy. In order to keep things moving, I would not recommend a process that requires every equipment purchase to come to the council individually.
Yes.
If there are absent a policy on shutting down a pool.
Yeah.
We would most likely approve such a purchase, because it's, you know, there are liability issues, there are, you know, service issues, there's public safety issues as well. So it would be looked at in that context. So if it came down to where there would be a major policy decision, I think that's a decision for the mayor and council. But on a, you know, filter, you know, it depends on the dollar amount, and you know, there are a lot of different factors. So I think in something like that, where we don't want to get in a position where we have to shut down a pool because we can't purchase something.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And I agree with what Ms. Troy and Mr. Miller have said. You know, I would hope that we are all in the positions we are because we know how to exercise good judgment, and I think that's what, I think that's what all of you rely on us to do. But I also wanted to speak up to the fact that I really do not want to have to be reporting on equipment purchases in the financial status report.
Right.
I just think we have a lot of bigger fish to fry, and the fact that we don't have good systems in place to help us do that in an automated way, I think that is not going to be the best use of my staff's time as we come to the close of this fiscal year and try to do, to try to deal with the budget.
Okay, you know that I just think all of us are not going to want to get those calls from either an angry constituent or an angry employee of a particular department that when we find out something hasn't opened, hasn't started, has been discontinued, oh, didn't you know we put in a request for a certain piece of equipment and it was denied? We are not going to want to get those calls. So hopefully, in some way, if you're there because of your good judgment, understand the good judgment that we don't want to be impacted by something that our constituents have come to expect as a delivery of service that all of a sudden is not happening because a piece of equipment was denied. Because frankly, we do know that happens, and the being counter mentality, we understand that, but just use your good judgment in terms of how it impacts constituents who are expecting a certain level of service.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. I believe, Mr. Clerk, just for clarification, are we going to take that up now and vote on it, or are we going to go on to four A?
I believe council would take care of all this at the end of the discussion.
All right, I believe our next item is four A, and am I correct?
Yes, Mr. Parks called that special.
Mr. Parks, did you want to make another comment on four A?
On four A, just wanted to reflect that this is part of the discussion earlier, that those funds be moved for the eventual uses either the graffiti program or the lump together with the funds that we received from the street furniture. Again, we mentioned earlier, four B is removed, but also four C should also be in place so that we can find an additional four hundred thousand dollars to do both of those left turns and the graffiti removal and the beautification grants. The only thing I'd like to add on the four C is Mrs. Grule's motion of coming back with a report back, is that we have a understanding of what the location of those sixteen sites are.
Okay, thank you very much.
Me.
Ms. Grule.
What, is it okay, I'm on the next, and I think it's, and there's a little bit of a discrepancy, not a discrepancy, but kind of clarification. I asked this question on Budget Committee last night. This does not make me popular probably among my colleagues, but there were lots of funds previously that a hundred percent of whatever received went into the general fund. We have gone astray a bit, but there were some restrictions put on them, and the one that I'll highlight was particularly the pipeline franchise fees. Now, when we include, I was going to say, no, no, but here's the, here's the position, colleagues. When we adopted that, we were not thrilled. I know the CAO and CLA wanted to keep a hundred percent, but the formula that was created said there was some nexus between those pipeline franchise fees and infrastructure, so that in those districts that had those, it was somewhat correlated to those parts, because, again, it's just like surplus property, which I have talked about. The benefit to the city, the surplus property that was purchased many years ago was not purchased by CD2 monies, it was purchased by citywide monies. So there had to be some nexus as to why you were, you know, fixed. Now, it says in the page twelve, it mentions, you know, different trust funds, and the fact that they could be used now for other purposes than otherwise originally used, originally dictated. And again, we were very careful, and Mr. Parks worked on this, that it was going to be related to infrastructure. So what may happen, and I don't know who has what, this is from a more strictly citywide, not looking at district by district, but let's just say, and I'll use Mr. Smith, because he's over there. Mr. Smith has an enormous amount of pipeline franchise fees. He has ten million dollars worth of pipeline franchise fees. Now, he has, he can now use that for libraries and parks and graffiti and other things. But guess what? Mr., you know, Mr. Smith has brand-new libraries, he has enough money to take care of his graffiti, he has all of that, but he's now going to get to use it for things other than what it was originally, we decided in our policy before. But in Ms. Perry's district, who has some challenges in making sure that she can get her graffiti funded and get new libraries and get her senior center and all of that funded, she gets no benefit from that now, because Mr. Smith now has taken it all, because he happens to have a franchise pipeline. Now, you know, again, I approved before, I voted for that, whatever, three or four years ago, Mr. Smith would be able to, this is all hypothetical, Mr. Smith would be able to keep his pipeline franchise fees to be used for infrastructure related to the fact that you have a pipeline going underneath your location. And I don't know what other funds in this instance are impacted by that as well. I'm not saying I'm taking the money away from Mr. Smith, I'm just saying Mr. Smith has to use it for infrastructure, because if you start expanding that, there is no direct correlation to the benefit for the communities across the city. And so I'm confused in this, sorry, I'm over, but in your, in the CLA's report on page twelve, it mentions a variety of things, and on page sixteen, it does not. It doesn't tell you specifically. So my point is, and sorry, Ms. Perry, because this is, it is confusing in all the instructions, my point is, we should not change our policy for the use of these funds unless they are directly correlated to what was originally adopted. Now, street furniture funds, that, everybody has some, they get, you know, it's directly correlated to the fact that you, the more, we now know with ViacomDeco, you know, there's some correlation there, and there's some decision-making and benefit. But I am not comfortable with making a policy change on these other areas.
Okay.
So I don't know, I guess I'm asking you, how would I make that change here in my recommendation, that we not, or come back? I mean, maybe this is confusing enough that we come back on those items.
I think what you do is move to disapprove F two little I, which is.
I'm sorry, disapprove?
It would be four F and two little I.
Okay.
On page sixteen.
To H, you mean? No, it would be.
I'm sorry, it would be four F, I think the instruction.
It wouldn't be H, and it wouldn't be, because H is, allows us to, you know, we're not changing the policy yet. And, Mr. Parks, I'd be fine with having them report back on this item, rather than trying to. Because there's no dollars attached to this at this moment?
Yeah, Mr. Parks, and then just go your way over your time now.
We can report back, because I think, given a side-by-side analysis of what's currently there versus what we're recommending, I think would solve Mrs. Grule's concern. I don't think we've expanded it to where it is not a nexus, I think we're trying to get graffiti in there, which I think graffiti would be an issue of an amenity that deals with the community, but again, I think if you did the side-by-side wording, you could see what the added language is before we alter.
Right, and if it's just graffiti.
We can do that.
But again, as you look at expanding it, there was, we really need to have some nexus, because it's not about, even though I would like to have purchasing parks or doing, you know, maintenance for those parks, there is no correlation to the, what's underneath the ground.
Yeah, because that was always part of the real property definition.
Well, again, there are, there's different funds in the Real Property Trust Fund, and they have different restrictions on them. I mean, surplus property is pretty wide open. The street furniture is relatively wide open, but not quite as open as surplus property. The most restricted is the franchise fee income from the pipelines. It is clear that what's in here is a proposed change in policy. I think it was in direct response to the concerns of the Budget Committee and the reality that going forward, many of the community-type programs, whether it's graffiti or community cleanup, or it might be left turn signals, or stop signs and traffic control devices that are not in the queue because of the available funding, it would provide more flexibility, but that clearly is a policy issue.
Then it should go to the general fund.
Exactly, that is clearly.
Then it should go to the general fund, not district by district.
Okay. Well, in any case, we can come back.
Well, I'm saying, if you want to expand it, it is, okay, I'll push my button again.
Can you press your button again, because we've got three people in the queue.
Again, that is, if you'd like us to come back and do a side-by-side, we can certainly do that, to make it clear what the changes are.
All my question is, is if we need more money for the general fund, then it should go in the general fund.
A hundred percent of it, is what you're saying?
No, I'm just, I'm saying if, you know, above, if it's not going to be used for infrastructure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Zein, you pressed your button, you're up next on this issue?
I'll come back.
Mr. Rosendale, do you wish to speak on this issue?
Yes, Madam President. I just want to have more clarity about the fifty-fifty and the timeframe and that kind of thing. First thing is, when it's declared surplus, during that process, you can work on it and maybe deal with it from a housing end, because I don't want to just throw everything into the general treasury. Give me some sense of flexibility about that.
Yes, well, the current fifty-fifty program for surplus property, again, that only applies to the surplus property sales.
Right.
That kicks in when a property is actually sold. Originally, all of that money had gone into the general fund, some years ago, the council changed the policy so that half that money goes to the general fund, half goes into a discretionary fund for use by the council office in which the property was located. But none of that kicks in until a property is actually sold.
So then, during that timeframe, when you're going through declaring it surplus or not, you'll have an opportunity to visit that issue?
Yes.
Okay, because just another issue, I have the West LA Civic Center, which is a dump, by the way, it's a dump in West LA, and I would like to build affordable housing on part of the land, and I'd like to clean the whole thing up. It isn't like the Valley's beautiful government building, I mean, it's an embarrassment. I don't know why they never invested in that beautiful piece of property between Corinth and Purdue on Santa Monica Boulevard, but I would like to have an opportunity to do something with that land that would create affordable housing. Can we somehow think those kinds of ideas when we talk about surplus property? Because frankly, I'm going to need money to do that with, and if we sell some land in my district, I would love to be able to have that opportunity to turn it back into creating. For instance, on that parking lot, I'd love to build affordable housing that is desperately needed in that area there. Does that allow that flexibility with that?
Well, sure, and again, it can be fairly flexible. On the property you're talking about, there may be air rights that we could sell and develop the property such that you have the community center, the government center, and you have housing, so there are, and you could declare air rights surplus, so it doesn't have to be an actual piece of property that you declare surplus. So yes, there's flexibility there.
Great, well, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendale. Ms. Grule, Ms. Grule, and Mr. Parks, Ms. Grule's up next with Mr. Parks after you. Do you want to resolve this, or do you want to?
I'm not sure we're going to agree, we're going to agree to disagree right now, so maybe if we can, come back with a side-by-side, I think that Mr. Parks.
Sure.
Mentioned to come back with a report on side-by-side and demonstrate that, and to see where those monies go, and how.
All right, so that means we'll go ahead then on four G. Ms. Grule, you called four G special? Ms. Grule, on four G, I think you're up.
That was part of all of these.
Okay.
It was F and F two and G. So I think Ms. Hahn is the next one on I.
All right, okay, great, then I guess we'll go on to four H.
Mr. Rosendale, four H.
Mr. Rosendale?
Thank you, Madam President. We're talking about I here. Are we? That's what I have as a question.
H.
I'm not H, I'm I.
You're on I, okay. Nobody for four H, somebody called four H special. Did anybody call? Who was it?
We had both Rosendale and Hahn for four H.
Okay, so Mr., no, Mr. Rosendale, Ms. Hahn?
Well, I'll let Ms. Hahn go first, please, on I.
Are we four H or four I?
H, we're on H right.
No, I'm not on H, I want to be on I.
Nobody's on H.
I never was in the four H club.
All right, let's go to four I.
There you go.
Four I. Ms. Hahn is first on four I, and then.
Thank you.
Your seat may, to your left, may speak.
Thank you. Four I is this age-old issue of the twenty-two LAPD officers stationed at LAX, for which time and time again, Lawa has said, not only do we not want them or need them, we're not going to pay for them. So these are twenty-two officers that are out there, and they're being paid for through our general fund, not wanted or needed, officers without a country. Part of why I wanted to bring this up was before, we obviously put off the table the idea of the forty-five recruits in the March class, and if we were going to take, if we were going to disband that, I was going to talk about this in a different way. What you're proposing is, the ninety, there's ninety officers at LAX, LAPD officers. What you're proposing is, the 90, there's 90 officers at LAX, LAPD officers, who work overtime at LAX, they work in their jobs out here, and then they do their overtime work at LAX. I believe they're the officers that you see sitting behind the podiums out there. I'm actually also not convinced that they're totally needed either, but what the proposal is now, we get reimbursed for those, right? From LAWA, those 90 officers are reimbursed, reimbursable.
We are reimbursed for the overtime.
So, we're just saying, take those 22 officers, and plug them into where the 90 are, so reduce the 90 by 22. So, now we have 68 officers out there who are all getting reimbursed. Is that basically what you're saying?
That is, and we believe that that's, that would, actually, we think to be saving for both, because, because LAWA does need those officers for overtime, they pay time and a half, at least, when they are on overtime. So, we think if there's a redeployment, then actually, they'd be paying straight time for the officers, and some of the 22 officers would also be reimbursed for the city, so we believe...
So, those 22 officers wouldn't be overtime, they would be straight.
Correct.
Does anybody know what they're doing right now? I know, so they, so basically, those 22 officers can just be, they're not doing anything now, so we're just going to, they're not fulfilling any other assignment that might conflict with us saying they're going to be thrown into this 90?
I might want to have the police department respond on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
The 22 officers are augmenting the...
All right, we can't hear you.
Sorry. The 22 officers are augmenting the officers that are assigned to the substation, so they're full-time officers doing patrol duties, along with the people that are assigned at the substation down at LAX.
So, they are on patrol?
Yes.
Of LAX?
Yes.
Then how do we remove them, and just slot them into this, these 90 that are behind the podiums in the terminals?
Well, what they would be doing is moving those, you know, we have a certain number of staff shifts that we work out at the LAX on the overtime detail, and in fact, it would end up costing LAWA more money, because those 22 officers, when we bill LAWA for our costs down at LAX, we apply the cap rate, so it actually will be 130% over their regular duty, to pay for, for LAWA to have to pay us for those people.
So, they're going to become more expensive?
More expensive for LAWA, less expensive for the city.
Right. It sounds like, you know, it's kind of, it's a little bit of a, it's a little bit of a wash, and I will always go on record at this point, saying, I think those 22 officers, if we're already getting reimbursed for the 90 overtime, okay, so we're not gaining, really, or losing, we're already got 90 officers that we're completely being reimbursed for, take the 22 officers, who are never quite sure what they're doing, and bring them back into the department for deployment, I'll take them in southeast in a second.
Well, the department maintains that we need the 22 officers there, they do know what they're doing down there.
But LAWA has said, and LAWA is the, is the manager of this situation, they're the ones who are the expert in what they need and don't need at LAX, we have a fully-staffed airport police agency, we have 90 LAPD officers working overtime that we're getting completely reimbursed for, take those 22 officers, and bring them back into the department, that'll even get us closer to our goal of hiring more LAPD officers on the streets of LA, where I think they're really needed at this time. Thank you very much. I take that as a great compliment coming from a cop. Okay, you look like you have something to say on this. Commander?
Councilwoman, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The department looked at the proposal to remove the 22, and increase the number of officers working the overtime. The issue won't work for us, because we believe that taking the 22 out of the mix removes those officers from LAX Field Services Division that are there full-time, that understand the issues at the airport, that are impacting crime, terrorism, first responders, it's our position.
I know it is.
That that is exactly what those 22 do. The officers that are there on overtime, and it's an important distinction, come from all over the city. They may work, they may not work again for a couple of weeks, it depends on their days off, their availability, their desire to work the overtime shift, so they are more transitory, they provide a service while they're there, but they don't have the same level of expertise as it relates to an intimate understanding of airport operations.
And yet, and yet, they're the ones stationed inside the terminals at the security checkpoints.
They are, they are...
Those 90? Yes, they are. Okay, go ahead.
The 90 officers work a variety of assignments.
Some of them are at the security checkpoints.
And they have been specifically trained to do so at LAX.
And some of them are at the security checkpoints.
Are they at security checkpoints, in part? Do they do checkpoints out on the roadways leading to the airport? They also do that. They do a number of different functions, including crime prevention.
So, they're already, so they're trained, even if they, they work every once in a while, they're, they know the ins and outs of terrorism, and airport issues, and, so they're, they're doing that, those jobs.
They are, they don't know the ins and outs, the way the 22 do, because the 22 are full-time. 22 are there their entire work week.
That makes me nervous, that we've got officers who are doing the checkpoints, we have officers who are at the security checkpoints inside the terminal, that don't know the ins and outs of terrorism issues at the airport.
And that's not what I'm saying, Councilwoman, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that the 22, because it's their full-time post, it's what they do as their primary duty assignment, understand the issues better than the officers that go there part-time to work overtime. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I, you know, that's not a great answer, in my personal opinion, I also think we've got, we have to go back, every time we talk about this in the budget, and look at what LAX, we have a brand-new general manager who has said the same thing that others have said before her, that they do not need those 22 officers. I'd rather us do a better job of those 90 overtime ones, that we do some better deployment issue of their, on a regular basis there, so that they actually do know what's going on, and take those 22 officers, again, and put them back in the streets, and retrain them, and redeploy them to fight crime in Los Angeles.
Ms. Han, would you like to do a verbal motion on that? I have a report back.
So moved.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Han, it sounds like you've been sitting in our budget meetings for the last couple of years, because this is the same discussion we revisit constantly. The fact of the matter is, and please, Chief, if, with all due respect, those officers were put there after 9/11. We needed them there then, Department wanted them there then. What is different between then and now is, the airport police have upped their deployment considerably, and that is why they say they don't need your people there anymore, because we built that department up, we've given them additional authorities they didn't have before. That is a true police department now, and your chief agreed to that in an MOU. So, we have done what we needed to do to build the force, we no longer need those officers there, the airport police says, we don't need you there, they don't back us up, we don't need them, the airport general manager says, we don't need your people there, our people around this council says, we need those people on the streets of LA. We've given you an opportunity in this proposal today, to keep those 22 there, but apply them to the 90 every day, the first guys that we apply. So, you have your 22 that have extra knowledge theoretically, there, in this, in the more of the fixed post positions, because the airport police are doing that police work outside, and they say, you don't need them, sorry. So, I don't know why we keep having this argument, but we've given you an opportunity. Now, if you're saying you don't want it, then I support Ms. Han's motion, say, you know what, police department, then forget it, we're going to make that decision, and just take the 22 cops, and put them back on the streets of LA where we want them, because they're no longer needed at LAX. Everybody says that, except you and your chief. No one else says they're needed there but you guys. And so, and to the comment that those cops that are there on the 90 officers that are on overtime aren't trained, I know those guys, I see them there all the time, they all sign up repeatedly for that deployment. They know the airport, they know what they're doing there, they got their badges from the airport, saying they're trained, they know what's going on there. So, to say that these 22 somehow have special knowledge that the other 90 don't have, is really disingenuous. And I think it's somewhat berating to the 90 cops that are there, that know what's going on, they know why they're there, they know what they're supposed to do. And I think I'm getting really tired of this argument. I want to put those 22 back on the streets of LA where they belong, because they're not needed at LAX anymore. And if you won't take the deal that's offered today, then I support Mrs. Han's motion, we'll just take them away from you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendale, who called this special originally, so we're going to ask him to speak next.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Indeed, I called it special, and I appreciate what Ms. Han did in her leadership role as Chair of the Committee, and Mr. Smith, not only on the Budget Committee, but a reserve officer in his comments. Help me out again. I've been on the council two years and seven months, from the very beginning, I was told by the LAWA leadership then, and now by the new LAWA leadership, that those 22 officers are not necessary. So, 90 are necessary, and part of the process, but additional 22 aren't, therefore, LAWA would not pay for it, meaning the airport, with all of its revenue, wouldn't pay for it, so the general fund has paid for it, which is roughly, I think, $2 million, am I right about that? All right, so there's $2 million that the city treasury is eating, because LAWA says it's not necessary. So, help me out, I mean, just take me to the next level. Why do you think it's necessary, when those who run the airport, and then all the federal people involved, and all the other aspects involved, have no dog in that fight, have no interest in that? Explain that to us.
Well, I think it's been made very clear that LAWA believes that the 22 are not necessary, I think that the Department would stipulate to that, and we understand that that's their position.
Well, who runs the airport? You or LAWA?
LAWA runs the airport.
So, why are you able to muscle your mind into saying, I'm sorry, we're right, you can have 22 more officers, because you need it, when they're saying they don't need it? I just want to understand that dynamic.
Right, and it's the chief's position, that we need those resources there, that in the event something occurs, they have an intimate understanding of airport operations, and they can support the effort to mitigate, whether it's man-made, or terrorist-related, or natural, that they can mitigate what's occurring at the airport.
But that's the 90 of them, why 22 more?
Well, the 90 of them, I know Councilmember Smith mentioned the 90, and that if we folded the 22 in, but the 22, if they were folded in, would have to have as their primary duty assignment, some other place within the city. They would then, when available, if they chose to do so, work the airport on an overtime basis. What we're saying is, those 90 officers that work... Right, well, and, well, I discussed that with the officers of the CLA, if they work their regular duty, they're still assigned to LAX Field Services Division. So, what have we accomplished if they work there, assigned to LAX Field Services Division full-time?
That's the point we're making.
Well, that's, that's my point, if they're there, that's exactly where we're at now. If the 22 officers are assigned at LAX Field Services Division as they are now, then, that's exactly what you don't want, Councilmember, right?
What we want is not to have the general treasury pay...
Right.
...for officers there that LAWA, in charge of the airport, and TSA, and all the feds, don't think are necessary. That's the only issue we got here, which is $2 million from the general treasury. LAWA has a lot more money through the passenger situation to handle issues there, and if they feel the 90 is adequate, and you say, no, we need 22 more, this has been going on for the two years and seven months I've been around, and that's a $2 million eat that the citizens of LA City pay, and we'd much rather have the airport pay for those things. But LAWA says they don't need those 22 officers, be it Gina Marie Lindsay, who's there now, or her predecessor that was there, and so on. It's been an ongoing disagreement that the general taxpayer has to pay for, and in this budget crisis situation, that's $2 million, that, we're not sure if there's a security issue here, we're told there isn't a security issue. Help me, that's all, I just want to understand it.
I think the, your position is very clear, I think the chief's position is, he needs the 22 officers there. What I can do certainly is go back across the street, and make your most recent collective thoughts known very clearly, and see where we're at, at that point.
Well, my hope is the mayor, who all these chiefs report to, would visit the issue himself, and say to one chief, it makes sense, to the other chief, it doesn't make, whatever. But this has been an ongoing issue for as long as I've been around, and I just want it resolved, one way or the other. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wise is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to lose this vote, Ms. Han. I'm going to lose the vote, and I was just talking with Mr. Smith, I said, well, if the council's being asked to decide, should 22 officers be at the airport, or in your districts, I mean, duh, I know, I know which way this is going, but I, and so, and so, I'm not going to press the point to finally today. I do believe that the right thing to do is to let the chief of police make his or her deployment decisions, and, and for this council not to be, I mean, we can be a budget council, we're here doing budget decisions, but we shouldn't be making deployment decisions, and we shouldn't be, should not be putting ourselves in the place of the chief of police. Now, the issues are connected, the deployment and the budget issues are connected, and let's be honest, they are connected, and you can't ever separate them, and I think it would be false to suggest that you can. I happen to believe that it's a matter of when, not if, we have another attack at the airport. And I happen to believe, well, first of all, it's a matter of fact, that when the next attack happens, and Mr. Smith and I were just talking about this, the FBI is instantly in control of a situation at the airport. Mr. Molina, you're going to be working for the FBI soon, I hope you enjoy that. And, whatever they tell you to do, you got to do it. And they will assume, they will assume control of any situation. As a practical matter, the force, the only force that can surge to that airport, that has any surge capability, is the LAPD. And I would feel a lot more comfortable if we permitted the LAPD and its command staff to make the decisions in peacetime now, that will aid them in wartime, which I think is inevitably going to happen to this city. And that's why I would prefer, and that's why I will vote, if we have votes, I would vote against little i. Probably by myself, my little i will vote against little i. Aye. Aye, aye.
All right, okay, thank you, Mr. Alarcon.
How many airport police are there? There's airport police.
I believe, I believe they are in excess of 700 now.
And how many are on duty at any point in time?
I don't know the answer to that, Councilmember, we could...
Does anybody have a deployment formula? I mean, typically, a deployment formula would be what, 20%?
Councilmember, I, I'm not certain that they're at 700, so it would be, I'd be out of school to comment on that.
For every cop that's on the street, how many are typically at home, not at the street?
Well, we, we use a relief factor at LAPD of 5.43 to staff a 12-hour shift for one car. So, if it's a two-person car, over the course of a 28-day deployment period, we need five and a half.
Here's, here's my point, Mr. Wise said that the only surge capacity we have is LAPD, and I just think, as a technical matter, that that math is incorrect, because the LA Airport Police Department has surge capacity to the extent it can bring off-duty cops on the job. And that's, and that's exactly the kind of capacity we rely on for LAPD in other disasters, and other exigent circumstances throughout the city of Los Angeles. So, I'm, I'm, at this point, if I have to vote, I'm going to vote with, with most of my colleagues, I haven't, I'm not convinced by LAPD's argument that these 22 are absolutely essential to our operation, and certainly, if it's a deployment issue, the chief can redeploy them someplace, and we're not cutting, we're just, we're just cutting these positions, and the funding of these positions, but if there's a place to absorb them elsewhere, I'm sure the chief will do that, if he feels that it's absolutely essential.
All right, Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Madam President. Is the police department over budget?
Yes.
How much?
Nine million over budget.
So, maybe, pardon me?
Nine million in overtime, their, their current hiring plan is expected to be about 31 over, which is, for this year, probably about another million and a half, and... probably about another million and a half, and...
So, what's the total? Would you say 30 plus nine?
Eleven million approximately, total?
The net is approximately 13. If the 31 over holds in terms of attrition versus new hires...
31 million.
No. The 13 million over.
13 million.
And on the earlier issue, if the 31 over holds, that would be an additional one and a half to 2 million that would need to be found.
And when we're talking about the financial difficulties the city is facing now, mid-year, and then what we anticipate next fiscal year, the mayor's made a clear directive that the Police Department is not going to be touched, correct?
Correct.
So, I think that, in all fairness, this 22's come up many, many times. LAUW reimburses the city of Los Angeles for the regular deployment at LAX, excluding the 22. Whatever's deployed there, in addition to the overtime officers, LAUW reimburses the city of Los Angeles. They have a regular deployment, officers assigned to the substation. The 22 that we pushed on them, that they don't want, that they don't want to pay for, is what's in question. We're not saying we're going to pull everyone back. Mr. Wise said war. We have a war going on right now in Northeast Division. We've got a gang war going in Northeast Division, where I'm sure they could use those 22 officers. They're taking south-traffic motorcycle officers and putting up in Northeast Division because of what's happening with the gang activity, where a man gets shot 15 times walking down the street with a two-year-old kid. That, to me, is a priority. And I don't want to question the Chief's deployment, but if we're not getting reimbursed by LAUW, and they've got deployment there, and they've got the overtime, I know law officers like to work overtime, in good conscience, since we're not going to be touching police deployment or police responsibilities, those 22 have been discussed a lot of times, maybe in good conscience, we should say, "Let's move these 22 to an area where they can do some good." And whatever happens with LAX, and all the officers are assigned there from LAUW Police, which are trained by LAPD now, and the L.A. Police Officers and the overtime officers, I feel comfortable when I go to LAX. But the question is, we're not getting reimbursed for 22 officers. It's costing a couple million dollars, and we're struggling for dollars so we can fund other departments. When it comes to all these other departments, libraries, and wrecks, and parks, and sanitation, so the Police Department has to do something to help us out, but to say, "We're not going to help you out at all, and everybody else has to suffer," then we're all tightening our belts, and the Police Department's not contributing anything. Even the Fire Department is going to be contributing. So, in good conscience, I would say, maybe we can make a readjustment, and say, "Maybe these 22 can go someplace else." And if LAUW wants to pay for them, then fine, but we have a general fund budget that is in desperate, desperate situation. We need to have those dollars. And I think that it really slaps the budget in the face to say, "We're not going to do it because of this priority, that priority." LAX has a ton of officers assigned from their own personnel, in addition to whatever they have for their security officers, in addition to police officers, in addition to LAPD, and the Customs, and all the other entities of law enforcement that are armed, that are there protecting the facility. So, I think that with the war going on in Northeast Division right now, those 22, I'm sure the Captain would love to have 22 officers help quell the disturbance that's taken place with the outrageous activity of the gang bangers. But I look at it, who's going to pay the tab? If the Police Department doesn't want to contribute anything, everybody else has to keep suffering, suffering, suffering.
Mrs. Stein, you're running over, so if he gives a...
Wait, wait. Can I get an answer to my question?
Sure.
All right. Let's ask your question, and then press your button again.
Okay. I think, to be clear, there are really two proposals before you. Ms. Hahn indicated, or I believe submitted a motion essentially to request that those officers be withdrawn. To be clear, the Council cannot remove those officers from PD. That is up to...
But we could cut $22 off of the budget for the Police Department.
You could cut the budget by 22 officers. That doesn't mean that the Chief of Police is not going to still leave those 22 officers there and take them from somewhere else. So, that's one proposal. What is in the report, and quite frankly, it's the same frustration that we've had for years, is the fact that LAUW won't pay for them, and the Chief of Police feels they need to be there. So, what we tried to do, and Mr. Smith suggested it, was sort of a compromise wherein the 22 would stay, but that the overtime that is required at airports, the first call would be that those 22 that are already there would staff that overtime, so that we are getting reimbursed for some of the costs of the 22, and LAUW is paying less overtime for the 90 that they're having on overtime. It truly is an effort to try to come to some agreement to put this issue to rest, but at the end of the day, it is up to the Chief to deploy the officers, and it is up to the airports to decide what they're going to pay for.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Mr. Weston is our next speaker.
Yeah, Madam President. Do we have representatives from the mayor's office?
If you could state your name and title for the record, please.
Certainly. Good afternoon. I'm Arif Ali Khan. I'm Deputy Mayor of Homeland Security and Public Safety.
You know, I would have to, in fact, before I get to you, I want to say that I would think that there could be a win-win here. Not to, I mean, every member of the Council's gotten up, has made a great point, and so has Mr. Wise. We do want to be prepared in the future if something were to happen, and I can see the sense in having a higher number of officers at the airport. But if I had to make a choice between the officers being at the airport in my district, I would probably choose my district. But also, given the airport and the airport's ability to generate money, I would think that, and what I'm going to ask you, are there discussions going on between the mayor's office and the airport? Because in the event that the airport could reimburse the department for those 22 officers, then they would, in fact, free up money so that we could hire 22 other officers that could be in our districts doing the things that we want to do, yet we would still have a higher level of security at the airport, because the worst thing that we can do is say that this is not going to, or that there won't be an incident. So, with that said, maybe help me understand what is actually going on at this point in time.
Certainly, Councilman. I would agree with you that we need to look at this in a comprehensive manner. There are discussions that are going on right now between LAUW and the L.A. Police Department about the financing issue, which, as you say, there is a possibility that LAUW could reimburse for these police officers. Because of the historical record, we can only look at this on a going-forward basis and not in terms of financing in the past. But we are having discussions with LAUW, most importantly, about a comprehensive security plan, so that the mayor's office is comfortable also with the overall security that's being placed at LAUW. But I should make clear that the mayor's office and the mayor does stand by the Charter provision that allows the Chief of Police to deploy officers as he or she would see fit, in this case, obviously, he. But we are working very diligently with LAUW to resolve this issue from both a financing standpoint and an overall comprehensive security approach.
And I wouldn't want to do it. I mean, we hired the Chief because this is his profession, and he's one of the best in the business, and, you know, we're glad that we have him, and I wouldn't want to suggest, wouldn't begin to suggest how he would go about doing his job. But for a person who just sometimes uses common sense, if we could wind up with an additional 22 officers on the street while still having the type of security protection at the airport, to me, that sounds like a win-win.
Certainly, and we are working with LAUW to possibly achieve that outcome.
Mr. Weston, you done? All right, Mr. Wise, again.
My question...
You are, Mr. Wise showed up next, then Mr. Labange, then Ms. Gruel, and Ms. Hahn.
Well, you know, you guys, you guys go ahead and speak. I mean, my suggestion, following on what Mr. Weston and Mr. Ali Khan just talked about, is could we put this in the category of tabling while the mayor's office continues? Is there a timeframe you can give us?
We can do it as soon as possible, maybe within the next week or so.
Well, can we at least table this provision for, when you say week or so, all right?
Perhaps a little longer.
The second mayor's office has worked, you say week or so. Can we table it for, say, two or three weeks and come back to this? Is there, have we been tabling other items, Madam President?
Oh, you can make a motion and have it report back. We can have it report back, but did that in the case of, I think, Ms. Gruel and Mr. Parks, so that gives them time to work through their issues and to report back through the committee process. So, we do it on the record.
Timing-wise, Ms. Gruel, is there a timeframe that you would suggest for that type of report back here?
Be able to come back in the next couple of days or by the next FSR, right?
Yeah, Ms. Gruel, if I may, I was going to suggest we include that.
Everybody on the queue before we make this.
I just want a timeframe for the motion that's reasonable and acceptable to everybody else. So, I would make a motion to table this item, pending a report back from the mayor's office, and for the sake of the motion, I'll say it's three weeks, but fill in the gaps and choose to make that one week or four weeks or whatever, right?
Is there a second on that?
I second it.
I can't hear you, Ms. Hahn. Can you speak to the mic? We should just adopt, we should adopt it. You? Oh. Well, Mr. Weston seconded the motion, so we either have to vote it up or vote it down.
My next comment, I'm going to say, I don't think we need to table it. We should adopt this. If we can get 22 paid for, then if we're here talking about our budget problem, I just use this opportunity.
Okay, Ms. Hahn, thank you. We have two competing motions.
Right, but I think we should adopt it.
Let's vote, Will, when it comes around.
We shouldn't table it.
Okay, hold on a second, so this doesn't get out of control. Mr. Smith is next.
Too late for that.
If you can let Mr. Smith, and Mr. Weston, and Mr. Labange, and Ms. Gruel, and Ms. Hahn. Maybe you can have a sidebar, Ms. Hahn.
What Ms. Hahn said. You know, to table this now is kind of ridiculous. We've been talking about it for two years. This isn't a new thing that just popped up. The opportunities have existed for two years to solve this, and you haven't. The General Manager of the Department said in our committee just four weeks ago, three weeks ago, said, "We still don't need them. If you're saying that the mayor's going to strong-arm the General Manager, go do that." But the opportunities existed, it didn't happen. Let's just go forward. We have an opportunity, and to Mr. Weston's concern, we find something that works for everybody. This proposal was that. It kept the 22 officers at the airport that the Chief wants. It allows us to solve our budget problem. It is a win-win for everybody. My recommendation through the mayor's, through the Chief's office was, take the deal and run with it. It's the best deal you're going to get. If you want to continue to fight this out, then we'll fight it out in a different venue. But today, what's before us is the best deal for the Police Department, it is the best deal for the Airport Department, it is the best deal for our budget. Let's take it and run with it. It's the best opportunity on the table for all concerned.
And Mr. Weston is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam President, and members. I think that maybe tabling the issue was the wrong word. I'm prepared to support this. However, I don't know what the proper wording is, but I would like for, in two or three weeks, for you to come back and tell us where you are with the discussions with LAUW, so that we can, I really would like to know where we are with that.
Okay, so just for clarification, we do have a motion that was seconded, introduced by Mr. Wise, and seconded by Mr. Weston, so...
Mr. Wise, Mr. Wise is going to withdraw.
I would, I still want the opportunity to vote no on the item, but I'll withdraw the motion, and...
You'll be given the opportunity to vote on the item. So, are you introducing a new motion in lieu of...
Do we have to, do I have to do it via a motion? If that's the case, then yeah, that I want them...
I just think it brings more clarity to the process, otherwise, we keep having these cross-conversations without any resolution.
Then a report back, that's what...
Back in two weeks.
A report back in two weeks.
All right. Do you have a second on that one? No objection? All right, Mr. Wise seconds it. All right, great. Next speaker is Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Commander, a question. Is this an eight, 10, or 12-hour shift at the airport?
At the airport, 10.
10-hour shift. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gruel, and then Ms. Hahn.
And I won't speak very long either. I think that the compromise, as Mr. Smith mentioned, that was in here, said that we reduce our costs. I thought it was longer than two years that we've been talking about this. And I do think, and maybe it's in Mr. Wise's committee, which is, we have the LAPD, the mayor's office, and the airport police at the same meeting discussing the same thing. Because what we've heard from the airport police is, "Thank you. We have enough. We'll call you if we need you. Your 90 officers are great. We don't need your additional 22." And so, every time we've had this in budget, I feel like this is Groundhog Day. It keeps coming up, and I, you know, I thought we resolved that. I thought we got our 22 million, or whatever it was, you know, in that part. So, I think that we should adopt, and I'm sorry if I am repeating what people have already said here, but adopt the item that is before us today, which is "I," and come back with that report in two weeks, and that we ask LAPD, Airport Police, and the mayor's office to be present at that meeting to explain how we're going to get out of this. But they all need to be there at the same time.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Again, I think we should adopt this motion today, or this recommendation. If we're talking about trying to solve our budget problem, the 20, at least in this compromise, the 22 officers will be paid for by LAUW, as opposed to taking a hit from the General Fund. I don't think, I don't think we're going to, Mr. Weston, or whoever suggested it, hire an extra 22 because LAUW is reimbursing us for those 22. We've already been talking about being over budget. So, I don't think we get that piece of it, but at least we get LAUW to pay for these 22 officers. And if we're, if today is about belt-tightening and finding ways to solve some problems, it's the only thing reasonable we can do today to give us a bit of a relief in our general fund dollars. But I certainly will not be ashamed to say, I used this to bring up this issue again, and as many of you have expressed today, it is frustrating, and we're not the Chief of Police, and we know that he is in charge of deployment. We also have a very skilled person, Chief Jim Butts, out at the airport, who has also presented a very comprehensive security plan on his best decisions on how we keep LAX secure. Look, we all want LAX to be secure. That's the number-one issue for all of us. But again, in this budget crunch, when we're trying to find, you know, more officers in the budget, when public safety is our number-one issue, we've just always felt like, and it's been supported by a number of studies and a number of experts, that those extra 22 officers at the airport probably could be deployed other places in Los Angeles at a better use. But having that fight still out there, at least this compromise that's on the table today will get them paid for by LAUW, as opposed to our general fund, so I will support that.
Great. There are no further speakers in the queue on this item. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Wise?
I was trying, the button didn't work.
Okay, Mr. Wise's button is not working.
Very briefly, I just want to say to Ms. Hahn that I really appreciate what she just said, and I take her advocacy in this respect, you know, for precisely that point, that her effort is to try to get full reimbursement, so that there is, as Mr. Weston said, the win-win. I'm going to vote against it, but I do appreciate what you're doing, what Mr. Smith's been doing, what Mr. Rosendahl's been doing as an effort towards getting the full reimbursement. That's how I take it.
All right. Thank you. There's no further speakers in the queue. Our next item, I think, is 4K. Ms. Hahn, you called 4K special.
Do a thing redone. Item 5, which was mistakenly, and the whole agenda, on consent. The clerk's notice was for tomorrow, that we need to reconsider that and put that back on the agenda.
What time do you have to leave, Mr. Rosendahl?
Right now.
Okay. Why don't we pause right now and do the motion for reconsideration on item 5, you said?
Right.
All right, go ahead. He open the roll on that? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
All right.
Continue it to tomorrow.
All right. No without objection.
And Madam President, since this is all finished right now, we should take a bite to take control.
Yes. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
All right.
All right, we'll go back to item 4K.
Again, I think I touched on this briefly, but this is to instruct all departments to explore and report to Council ways to generate additional revenue. I just want to make sure, I would like to know, when is this happening? When can we come back with some ideas? And it's kind of almost, you know, I also, I don't know in what context we're asking them to do this... do this. Are they going to report back? Are we going to have a day where everybody comes in with their ideas? How quickly can we get these out-of-the-box ideas to generate more revenue? Because I think until we get to that point where we've really got some ideas before the council, so again, we might have to make policy decisions on advertising on our sanitation trucks or whatever, we've got that before us quickly, and we can know how much money those kinds of ideas will generate. How is this happening?
Departments and their staff were encouraged to generate new ideas about revenue. And we do have an inventory of those that we've been going through. We're happy to provide that. That could come back. Advertising, frankly, is something that has come up in many venues.
Right.
And one of the issues has always been, what is our public policy with regard to advertising?
Right.
And so there are many different things that could be advertised on.
I think we're going to be able to determine our public policy when we realize how much revenue it could possibly generate. I think we might have a different feeling about our policy on advertising if we look at how much revenue. I'm looking for a list, Jerry and Karen, that basically says, here are these out-of-the-box ideas from oil extraction feed, advertising on the side of our buses to whatever. Here's how much money it generates. What policy do you, council members, would you like to adopt that could possibly get us this kind of revenue? And I want to, hopefully, things like, how are we increasing tourism dollars? I mean, I want LA Inc. to provide maybe, again, an idea on how we can do that. And how soon can we look at that?
In terms of the ideas themselves, I think we could come back fairly quickly. What is going to take more time is the analysis, particularly if we want to get some order of magnitude on, say, advertising.
Right.
We have a proposal right now for advertising on library computers. So we have that positive.
I guess my feeling is, again...
Different things are going to have different revenue impacts.
But you know what? To me, I think you should all really start putting your energy into this. This is where I think you ought to be working around the clock to come up with ideas to generate revenue. Because I think everything we're adopting is still just a notch on the belt. And again, if this year looks bad, next year's going to be worse. This is what I kind of want everybody working around the clock on, every department, every employee, every thinker out there, to come forward with ideas to generate revenue. Because until we get to that point, we can do a lot of belt tightening, and we're just not going to be where we want to be. So I want that to be done quickly and not take a long time analyzing the stuff.
Well, we are aggressively working to come up with ideas and be as creative as we can. We're talking to people about tourism dollars and marketing, et cetera.
Do you think in 30 days, we could all have a comprehensive list of potential revenue-generating ideas?
We can do our best.
We can do a list.
And we will be back to you, hopefully within that time, on advertising at the convention center, which is going to generate at least $2 million a year.
Could we give incentives or bonuses to employees that come up with the best idea to generate revenue in the city? I mean, why don't we, you know, put this, not just general managers, but all employees? We're a family, and we're in a bit of a bind here.
We're also getting some of those ideas. That's part of what's going on in the mutual gains process, is that the union and their members have been trying to put revenue ideas on the table. So we've been trying to flush some of those out as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Gruel. Next speaker.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. That's music to my ears, too, because this is part of the motion we introduced that said we needed to look at that. And I'll remind everyone here that a year ago or so, when we asked Department of Transportation to put advertising on the back of their buses, DOT, who said to me they were wrong, which I always appreciate when I was right, but said it would cause problems with their people who were riding their buses, that they would not like that advertising. They might not ride on their buses. And they, just like when Karen said I was right on the business tax, I always appreciate that, too. But how much money have we received? We budgeted about $400,000 that we were going to receive this last year on the advertising for buses? Yes. Okay. And we received more than that, correct? How much more? Okay. I think it's, I think my recollection is it's several hundred thousand dollars more that we received, Ms. Han, on the back of these buses, that had the whole hardware there. I mean, if you think about some simple things, had hardware for PSAs, and all we had to do was just sell the space. It wasn't any cost to the city. What we did see recently, and we are asking both the contractor and DOT to come back, was I've been in a few dash buses where I see very little in the place, there's PSAs, but there's nothing else in those areas. I also saw a commuter, I think it was a commuter express last night, that had no advertising on the back, no hardware, nothing. So I think that as we go forward, we need to look at that and the ability to get more revenue from those. And as Mr. Rosendahl talked about on our meters, I mean, some of our meters have been in existence, have never been raised in 17 years, the amount. And I know we're talking about our new technology and all that, but that is also part of what we need to have coming forward as part of the parking study, the importance of our revenue from that as well. But I think we need to put on all our creative minds and put all of our, you know, kind of preconceptions about what advertising or other things are and look creatively. Yes. I think there was a quote, there was some quote you used earlier. I can't remember what it was, but it was very accurate in its description of what we need to do. So thank you, Ms. Perry. I just wanted to add those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
First and foremost, I think, members, we should invite, I know Mr. Zine is a very hard-working member in this, the League of Cities nationally, or the California League of Cities, to this table and ask that they have their experts come to discuss the wide variety of revenue. Ms. Han, you tipped the iceberg there when you called for this aggressive action as it relates to revenue, that we could look what the League of City does, what National League, what are other cities doing around the world. We'll put a bulletin blast out to our 25 sister cities and see what makes sense. And Ms. Gruel, when you spoke about that, I remember the old Peppmabismal ads and Bubble Up ads. They used to be on the old MTA buses years and years ago, especially coming down Third Street right there. They had that big circle right on the front. There's opportunities to do that. But also, remember, there's people in our constituencies who feel it's nice to look at something that's not selling at you all the time. So you say it's too bad, Janice, but also I do say it's a discussion that we should have. A, what is the benefit of the revenue? What does it cost us to make the revenue? And B, what is the downside? I particularly don't like the poll, and I'm asking Truck Captain Rude up there at 27th and Hollywood to give me an idea. When they put these banners on the side of the building, is it unsafe? Could we put a banner? How much could we make if we had a billboard on Piper Tech next to the Highway 101? You know? I mean, that's a tremendous thing. Would we want that? How many locations would we have make? And I'm not saying that, Mr. Miller, and I do appreciate your leadership, Jerry, to do that, but there's areas that we could look at. How much we could make on the interchange of the, excuse me, the Santa Monica Freeway?
The Santa Monica Freeway, San Pedro, for example.
Harbor Freeway. It should be the San Pedro Freeway. How much would we could make if there was a billboard on the side of the convention center that's got all that?
At least $2 million a year and probably more, and we're going to bring that forward to you within the next month.
Right. But also, I think at the same time, those people who are very engaged in community, those in neighborhood councils who sometime, and I think of Sidney Misakowski, who was so aggressive in a right way in trying to protect the environment, based on her training from Marvin Brody, who was really the father of the billboard deal. How does that balance out? So I threw a lot at the table. The main thing is to get experts here from the National League of Cities and the California League of Cities and see what everybody's doing. And also, Mr. Miller, do you have a Southern California Association of Legislative Analysts or government groups, you know, the city managers from other cities around, you know, see if there's an idea that makes sense, you know, makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Westen?
Thank you, Madam President and members. Ms. Han brought up a very, very good point. And I know, Richard, you probably remember, and Tony would remember, there is a, I'm just having a senior moment, and I can't remember exactly what it's called, but there's a similar program in the state. And usually, once a year, we would vote to give an employee that came up with some cost-saving idea a percentage of the savings, 4%, 5%. I don't remember what it is. So as you do the research that Ms. Han has suggested, I do believe there's a program in place within the state government, so that could give you a start as well. But I do remember that when soon as you said it.
We did it. We did it.
Thank you. Are you done, Mr. Westen?
We did, we...
We used to do it.
Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you. You can sit down and finish your moment. Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith.
The question just was, why did we stop it? For those who don't know this, we actually had a program like that for a number of years through our commission on...
But we still do it.
We still... No, I'm told now we're still doing it. I brought a motion in to restart it because we weren't doing it.
We still do, get employee submissions. They're evaluated by the members of that commission. And then, based on which ones are chosen, there's an award ceremony once a year.
But no cash anymore?
Right.
Okay. We used to give cash awards to employees who save large amounts of money. So that's what my motion was, and we need to find that and bring it up and back in the committee. My motion was to reinstate the program of giving cash rewards to employees that showed us ways to save money. So...
You said generating revenue, not just cost-saving measures.
Efficiency.
People think about, how do we generate more money? And I think they'll come up with an interesting idea. I'd love the idea of, though, about a percentage. Yeah.
So, Mr. Parks, we'll find that motion and get it in committee so we can get that going again.
Now, for the probably 20th time, we have Mr. Labange.
I just want to make one point, too, members. When we talked earlier about the parking meter fund, you know, it was dedicated to improve parking. The Western Wilshire Parking District, if you look at the parking meter, will have an initial on it. That money was supposed to stay in the area, but that has all changed. That's correct? Okay, good. Now, let's see if we get these unique revenue, Ms. Han. I would love to do something that would fund more cultural affairs grants for artists in the city. But yet, if we sell out certain things, are we just selling it out to the general fund, or are we selling it out to make sure that it goes to where a need is, where the artists have a need, where recreation and parks has a need, where some of the tougher issues? Because if we are going into a bleak, dark period because of the budget, these things are extremely important. And reading the reports of the tragedies in northeast Los Angeles recently, they spoke about an uptick in some of these things. And I'm thinking, okay, we need more police officers, but do we need more criminologists? Do we need more sociologists? Do we need more planning land use people who could deal with some of these severe challenges that our city police department faces, no matter how many police officers they have? I believe Chief Bratton says we can't arrest ourselves out of these problems. So I think all these are real important to have in context of discussions about how we want to operate the city and how we want to benefit the city and the quality of life. And if we do sell out our spaces for space, is there a vehicle to make sure that we go, because we're going to cut cultural affairs? I don't want to cut cultural affairs, because there's artists throughout the city who need that help and support. I don't want to cut recreation and parks, but there's a playground that gives a benefit to a young person, a boy or girl, a senior citizen, that in quality of life is so important. So that's the question. Because much of this discussion, am I right, Ms. Sisson, is taking all avenues and putting it back in the general fund. And I do want some avenues to be alleys to enhancement, alleys and pathways to cultural improvements and how we live in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Alarcon?
Yeah, just very briefly, I just want to say that this is not a budget problem. This is an economic problem. We have socioeconomic conditions that are only going to make things worse. I expect, I anticipate crime will increase during this time period. But since I think we can agree that this is an economic problem, the question in terms of generating revenue to me is, what can we do to stimulate the economy? If even President Bush can figure out, he needs to propose a stimulus package. What can the city of Los Angeles do to stimulate our economy? What can we do to turn around the foreclosure problem? What can we do to keep the 10% of people, of homeowners in Los Angeles who may lose their homes during this time period, from losing those homes? And I would hope that we would dust off some of the proposals that are in the pipeline and get going with some solutions, like the $100 million bond measure that I proposed to save people's homes so that they could pay their taxes, so that we can diminish by just that much how much we are suffering in this budget. The point is that I think one of the things that needs to be part of any revenue generation proposal is economic stimulus. And I hope that you come up with whatever ideas. But also, I know that probably every council member here has submitted some kind of economic stimulus motion, and we might need to dust those off and see which ones might make sense under these conditions.
All right. And to close, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just want to thank all of you for participating, and certainly the work of the Budget and Finance Committee and the CAO/CLA involvement in the mayor's office for providing this report. I would just like to make a couple additions. Under 4L, I'd like to add some brief language that request that the Office of Finance, in conjunction with the CAO and the CLA, ensure that we get full compliance with all business tax laws and requirements, but more specifically, vendors that have a contract or RFPs with the city of Los Angeles. And that is reference to the most recent controller audit. Also, I would like to ask the CLA to, in conjunction with CAO, to report back to us on a new fiscal impact statement, now that we've deliberated, to give us some idea of what changes and what are the numbers that we are now looking at for '07, '08, and '08, '09. And so I would ask that we, as a council, approve the CLA report dated February 25th as amended through the deliberations of this council.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. No objection? All right. Now, before we start voting, we do have two speaker cards. And the city attorney has suggested that I ask people to speak on the record before we begin. So we have two speakers. Valerie Lynn Williams, are you still present? And then Jim McQuiston. So Ms. Williams, if you're still present, come on up to the microphone, please.
Which card am I addressing?
Item 4.
Item 4? Okay, thank you. Item 4, 8, and 10 are my concerns. Instruction that COA and the librarian to minimize the book purchasing budget while maintaining overall reduction of the library department at $2.1 million. Okay, $2.9 million. My concern is, how much is this going to affect the users of the library? Because we have a lot of people that use the services. I'm a volunteer of the adult literacy program, and it's very important to me and the other volunteers that we still be able to contribute to the community by helping to educate and prepare those for better jobs and better living circumstances in this community. And the library is one place where we are able to effect a great change in people as far as the literacy. And for my students, just the students I've had in the past couple of years, the job promotions they've received, the status in their lives, the changes in residence and stuff, shows me that this is a valuable process, and I'd hate desperately to lose it. And there are a lot of materials needed for this program, and I'd hate to see them cut. And then on the eighth one with fines, I mean, on 10, the instruction 10, where you see the fines and fees.
Thank you, ma'am. Time is up. Mr. McQuiston?
Jim McQuiston. There are some immense incomes that this council can recover. The statute of limitations has not expired. The Streets and Highways Code of 1911 requires property owners to pay for sidewalk, curb, and gutter repairs. and gutter repairs. The amount that could be recovered from this is probably somewhere in the order, if we go back by the statute of limitations, in excess of $20 million right now, okay? Also, we can probably recover at least $5 million out of the money that was given to neighborhood councils, budgeted for which they have no use. So here, right away, we have $25 million. That's what, over half of our budget deficit solved right now. So let's get busy and do that. The state law says we have to do that. Someone, our Jarvis or somebody is going to sue us, and we're going to have to pay out money for legal defense if we don't do it on our own.
Thank you very much. No further speaker cards on this item. So what is before us is to move the entire report as amended, and I believe Mr. Weiss has pressed his button. Mr. Weiss?
Madam President, there are two items that I would like to be recorded as a no vote on. I don't need, we can go through the whole motion of separating them out, or what does the clerk suggest? Or I can just indicate that, and I could be indicated as a no vote on particular items? Whatever, whatever...
Hold on a second, let the city attorney answer on the record. Mr. City Clerk, can you clarify?
I believe the matter could be bifurcated if he wanted to be recorded as a no vote on two different items.
I mean, I'll tell you, I would like to be recorded as a no vote on 3D and on, what was it, 4I? And whether that requires a...
Mr. Clerk, can we move the entire report with the exception of 3D and 4I, and then have two separate votes on 3D and 4I?
Yes, council could do it that way as well.
All right, why don't we do that? Let's open the roll and the rest. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 11 ayes, and then item 3D is next.
If council wishes to take 3D and 4I.
Okay, fine. You want to open the roll on 3D and 4I? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 1 no.
Thank you. All right, what's our next item?
Item 13 was called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And I know we've been here a long time, but it is apropos that we were just talking about DASH. I mean, if I could have staff come up real quickly, because I know this is an important issue to me and I know to Mr. Alarcon, because we're the next in line for the next DASH service when we find some money. First off, I just want to recommend publicly, the recommendation number six from this item should be deleted as the council previously approved discontinuing the acceptance of Metropasses effective January 1st, 2008. This is a study about how to enhance our downtown DASH routes, so specifically downtown. And as many of you know, we have a bit of financial crisis for funding for our DASH services, so it's really critical that we utilize these resources as efficiently and effectively as possible. This report recommends discontinuing the Free City Hall Shuttle, which is duplicative of Route A, and by eliminating the service, we can free up buses and funds to expand the services downtown that we currently have to, to, I think, fix some of the problems and challenges. And so we need to see as the face of downtown changes to be able to respond to those changes, and we need to maximize the reach and breadth of service so that it can serve as many people as possible. I just want to ask you two quick questions, actually, three quick questions. One, does the proposed, do the proposed changes risk our FAP funding at all? Two, how quickly can these changes be made? And three, can you give reassurances to people who are riding this bus and that we're going to make some route changes to accommodate those that are going between here and Fig Plaza or other places?
To your first question, Jim Lefton from the Department of Transportation, it will not have any negative impact on our FAP, quite the contrary. The City Hall Shuttle does not receive any FAP funds and no Fairbox revenues as well. By making this change, one bus in the City Hall Shuttle will be rerouted to the DASH Route A, where we'll get revenues from the passengers as well as getting FAP for the first time. So that'll pretty much cover the cost of running that bus through the additional revenues that we're receiving.
Okay. And so can, the changes can be made quickly?
We first need to do the signal work, which is part of the recommendations in our report. We estimate that will take about three to four months, and in the meantime, we can start putting word out to the passengers about the changes, so as soon as the signals are in place, we can make the changes to the service.
Great. Well, I just want to say, yeah, thank you for making the change of study, and I know you worked with Ms. Perry's office and many of the other, I think Mr. Weisark's there impacted by this downtown. But I do want to call, because we just had a conversation about advertising, and they came over, I thought they heard us, but they were coming over for this item, that there's at least $100,000 more this year that we received in revenue than we anticipated, that they're looking at on the sides, right now, on commuter and DASH, it's just on the back of the bus. It's hard on the DASH buses because of the big windows to do anything on the side, but looking at the commuter express as well. And so we were interested, one of the other comments that was made about, that is the internal pieces, which we wrote on one, which we, they said was anomaly, so I want to be proven wrong on that one, that there is advertising within those areas that we have on, in the internal side of the bus. Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. All right. Thank you very much. Two speaker, well, one card. Mr. McQuiston on this item.
Jim McQuiston, the only question I had on this was on the City Hall Shuttle because of the wide space between the buildings that the city employees, and I know they do go back and forth from City Hall to Figueroa quite often. And I asked, will the city employees have a special pass for the City Hall, for the D, I think it's the D or the C bus, I guess, or A bus? And the answer that I got was, no, the city employees will have to pay the 25 cent charge back and forth. And I don't know if this would impact our employment agreements with the city employees, so that was my concern about that. And that was my only concern about this.
Thank you very much. No further speaker cards. Mr. Clerk?
I was just going to say, if Mr. Lefton could just respond to that, because he looked like he was ready to respond to Mr. McQuiston.
I just wanted to add that there are a number of city employment sites throughout the downtown area, and they are currently, many of them are currently served by DASH. And what the departments do is basically just purchase DASH ticket books that they distribute to their employees for making work trips in the downtown area. We would expect that the same thing would occur with the Route A service.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, if you could please open the roll? Okay, hurry up, open the roll. Close the roll. What do you, it worked out for you anyway. Okay. Tabulate the vote.
Say something?
We've already voted.
You already voted, all right.
There'd be plenty of other opportunities for you to talk.
I got it, I was just serving the public.
This is not the last time.
Back in the chambers, I apologize.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
All right, next item, Mr. Clerk. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Item 14 called special for cards from the public.
All right. We'll go to the valley for Donna Pierman.
Okay, great. Let's see. How about, oh, sorry, fee waivers. First, I'm totally against making men and women take five days off of pay. How about belt tightening? You cut back on fee waivers. You want to raise meter fees, yet you do fee waivers. I'm alone always crying about fee waivers. These waivers are like sugar coating, but they don't really help Los Angeles of real problems. Los Angeles has a real big problem with homelessness and home foreclosures. Sure, you can find reasons why they cause themselves, but the fact is the fee waivers won't help these men, women, and children. Being homeless is terrible. Fee waivers won't stop gangs. Or do you say, go to a carnival, not to a gang, won't work? Men, women, and children are starving. What about, say, go to parade, have some cookies and punch? Fee waivers won't help them. Parents can't afford to get their children what they need for school, and schools keep on wanting and needing more from, from these overworked, underpaid parents. Do the fee waivers help that? No. Do they help kids, poor and middle class of all creeds, and scholarships go to college? No. Some kids can't even finish high school. Fee waivers make certain sectors happy and dumbed down, fill them with frivolous events so they don't notice you have added fees, belt tightening measures, and skyrocketing, prices skyrocketing. The African-Americans and Hispanic have problems that are not being solved. Give them parade, or let's have a day for them. How about the city employees, the overworked, unappreciated city employees? Let's help them. And mayor, I say, so put a moratorium on fee waivers. City councils say, let's do more. We do good with fee waivers, we're Santa Claus, except we don't pay for it, Los Angeles does. I say, no on fee waivers. Oops, I forgot. Let, tabulate, or close the roll, tabulate the vote. Let's say no for once. Or we will say no to you at the polls. No to the meter going, no, the meter going to a dollar, Mr. Rosenthal, unless you cut back where it affects the city council, like giving back your raise when you give them. We will do likewise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no further cards on that item. So just please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Item 15 called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
That's what item?
Item 15?
Yes, 15. Yes, I'd like to ask my colleagues to support a reward motion. On February 3rd, 2008, Michelle Simmons was driving southbound on Western Avenue with her daughter, Latifah Bowman, and grandson, Michael Nelson, when their car collided with a Ford Explorer driven by Fabian Espino. After the impact, the suspect and an unknown passenger abandoned their vehicle and fled the scene by foot. Simmons succumbed to her injuries and died at the hospital approximately 40 minutes later. Simmons' daughter and grandson sustained critical injuries in this hit-and-run traffic collision. We're being asked by South Traffic Division Detective Antonio Lee or Officer Ruben Mendoza, return call is 323-290-6063, to put forth this $75,000 reward motion in hopes that the suspect can be taken into custody.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Madam Clerk, if you would open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
That item's been approved. Next items.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Alarcon requests be excused to arrive at 11:00 a.m. on February 27th for city business. That meets council policy.
He will be excused.
Councilmember Parks requests be excused to leave at 11:30 on March 14th for personal business. That meets council policy.
He will be excused.
Councilmember Perry requests be excused Tuesday, March 4th for city business. That meets council policy.
She'll be excused as well.
That clears the desk.
Thank you. Any announcements today, colleagues? Announcements? Not, we have some adjourn?
Remind people to sleep here, so we got an extra day on Friday.
Oh, wonderful. Any other announcements? Do we have adjournings motions today? Yes, we do. If we could ask everyone to please rise?
At the end. At the end of the meeting. Thank you, Madam President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Willie Bean. He passed away Wednesday, December 19, 2007. He was born in 1927. He was one of three children with, to Ned and Ella Bean. He joined the Marine Corps, served in World War II. He became the, one of the first Black Marines to serve in the Pacific Theater. After leaving the Corps, he started a career in boxing after being discharged in 1945. He was involved in many legendary fights at the Olympic Auditorium, Hollywood Legion, and Ocean Park Arena. His career ran professionally from 1946 to 56. In addition, he won the Pacific Coast Heavyweight Championship in 53 and 54, and he also fought an exhibition locally against Joe Louis. He was a construction worker, worked on many of the LA skyscrapers, but had to retire due to his health. He was a member of a variety of organizations. He also was a co-founder of the Golden State Boxers Association in 1963 and served as president and sergeant of arms. Mr. Bean is a very colorful young man that, if you've ever been to some of the Golden State Boxing Association's events, there are some living legends there that basically made boxing what it was in Los Angeles in the 50s and 60s, and he was one of those people there that could give you story after story of some of his accomplishments in the ring, and so he will be missed as relates to this, his death.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Craig B. Long, who passed away January 16, 2008 at the age of 61. He was a remarkable man, whose tremendous loyalty, passion, and vision helped shape and cultivate the lives of countless individuals, and he was a hero to his family, a compassionate friend, and he was a simple man. He did all that he could for those in need. Whether you knew him as a father, a grandfather, or just a friend, he was a man who, just the thought of him would make you smile. He enjoyed working with community youth and was a strong advocate for traffic and parking issues. He is survived by one daughter, Carrie, and one grandson, Kenny. His funeral service will be held on Thursday, February 28th at Paradise Cove Church. He will truly be missed and forever belong in the hearts and minds of many.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Lavange.
Members, I ask for you to adjourn in memory of George Spires. Immigrated to the United States from Patras, Greece, where he was born. He served in the Merchant Marines and then wandered his way through the West after his stop in Seattle. Made his way to California, married to his wife, Jeannie, for 46 years. He was an engineer at General Telephone Electronics for 30 years. He survived by, as I said, his wife, Jeannie, his three daughters, including Sharon and Pamela, Orsula, and Joan. And also, members, I'd like to close today. We adjourn in memory of Charles Ryan, who was a musician, a songwriter, his famous classic hit, Hot Rod Lincoln, which in 1959, excuse me, in 1955 was first recorded as a rockabilly beat with lyrics that described that famous car chase. And it is, that left San Pedro late one night. So we ask you to adjourn in memory of Charles Ryan.
I think we must have some music coming. Is that what I hear? Okay. And with that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting's now adjourned.